Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call today's Tuesday, February eleventh, twenty twenty five meeting to order. We will start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty six and Treaty eight traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language, and culture. The first item up for business is the agenda. I think we'll start with additions or deletions. Are any additions or deletions?
Eight point one B.
Eight point one B, okay, we'll do that. It's on the agenda, so yes, that's okay, but we'll get there, that's all right. So we don't have any additions or deletions? That, yeah, it's okay. So prior to the discussion of the first item of the agenda, as per the procedural bylaw section nine point eight, we'll go around the room for each councillor to select the items they wish to debate. So far, the items that I know or have been informed of that will be discussed are two point one, four point one, four point two, four point three, five point one, five point three, six point one, seven point one, seven point two, seven point three, seven point five, eight one B, eight point two, ten point one, ten point one E, ten point one A A, twelve point one, twelve point two, and twelve point three. Are there any others? Councillor Hall?
Seven point four.
Seven point four. Any others? All right, there's motion for councillor, pardon me. Yes, for sure, we'll go through those one more time. Two point one, four point one, four point two, four point three, five point one, five point three, six point one, seven point one, seven point two, seven point three, seven point four, seven point five, eight point one B, eight point two, ten point one, ten point one E, ten point one A A, and all of items twelve. Okay? And councillor Chamsick has moved to approve the agenda. As discussed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, any opposed? We have nine and oh, thank you. And because our delegate does not start until ten A M., we'll move to the first item, five point one, which is sixty five, on page sixty five of your agenda's package. And this is the property tax receivables data up to April twenty twenty five. Is there a discussion? Okay, well, the recommendation here is that council receives a property tax receivables report up to December thirty first, twenty twenty four as information. And the second recommendation is that council direct administration to provide detailed tax receivable information specific to a particular item on this item or items on the report at the April twenty twenty five committee of the whole meeting. Would administration like to weigh in?
Certainly, thank you very much and good morning. The reason that this motion is before you, the second motion, is that we would like to know specifically what council is looking for with respect to taxes receivable so we can drill down. And rather than giving you the whole comprehensive report, which does take some time, if council is looking something for specifically in the report, then we can at least drill down to that item and provide that information to council. If you prefer that we bring you the the report in its entirety, then we can certainly do that as well. But we just want to make sure we give you the information you are requesting.
Okay, thank you. As you mentioned, it takes quite some time for this information. Are we able to get an idea of cost and time that that this report would be?
Typically, for this report that's before you, it takes our tax and assessment officer probably a full day. It's taking information from our software, importing it into Excel spreadsheet, going through the Excel spreadsheet when you've got over a thousand lines, and actually going through it manually, so it does take her some time, probably a full day.
And very honours, okay, thank you for that. We so appreciate the information that's that's here, councillor Cromwell and councillor Chamsick.
Thank you, we get a report from you during our committee of the whole meetings already, and I think if we need to drill down and want any more information, we can start to ask for it. I'm prepared to make the first half of the recommended motions.
Okay, thank you, councillor Chamsick.
That's precisely what I was gonna do.
Okay, thank you so much. Anybody else? Councillor Hall?
I'd be like to amend that to include the words and bring an update back to Committee of the Whole in April twenty twenty five as presented. Our role is oversight. And if we're looking to save time, to be honest, the fact that this is even on this agenda, to me, is a waste of administrative and council's time. You know, there's there's plenty of precedent that we've had in the past where maybe the whole asks men to provide us updated information. And and suddenly it seems like we've had a change in the procedure without a change in the procedural bylaw and I mean, if I had to, I could name a handful of motions where we've done exactly maybe the whole circle back, so I I don't think it's too much to ask on a infrequent basis to to see that administration is fulfilling their obligation by by looking after the finances of the municipality. And I think given some of the information, we you know, have talked about enclosed in previous meetings, and I suspect we'll talk about again today, the I think it warrants some oversight to make sure that tax, tax balances that are outstanding are being properly prepared. And this is our fundamental role. Is is are we, is the administration looking after the resources in the municipality? And I don't think we should throw it aside because it takes a little bit of time. There are plenty of other ways we can waste less of their time than by having them report to us on whether or not they're doing their job by looking after the outstanding taxes and collecting them. And if you look at the fact that we have, you know, six hundred and some thousand dollars outstanding from twenty four, three hundred and thirty from the prior year and onwards and backwards, there's a significant amount of money there that some of which I would argue should have already been collected had council performed its function and held our administrative team to account on, are they doing this? So I think at least this isn't a request to do this every month, it's not a request to do it every quarter. It's to bring us an update in April based on where we were to see what kind of progress they're making, and then we can collectively decide. Are they doing enough good work that we can maybe go six months before we get another update? But for me, as a councillor, I am not satisfied with the performance of our administrative team on the collection of these outstanding balances.
Thank you for your comments. I would disagree with the fact that I think administration is doing an excellent job. I think that who we have looking after our tax receivables has been doing an excellent job for many, many, many years. And I feel that administration is doing exactly what they need to do to collect and to follow up with anything that is in arrears, so I disagree with your comments. And would like administration to know that there are councillors here that definitely see the work that's going into this and appreciate everything that that they're doing. Your amendment, if you would like to, I'm sorry, I didn't write that down.
It's as worded under the background.
I'm sorry?
As worded in your agenda under the background section, to receive this report for information and bring an update to Committee of the Whole in April of twenty twenty five.
Right. Is there any further discussion, councillor Cromwell?
Thank you. Through the chair to councillor Hall, I'm a little bit confused then on what exactly you're looking for, as I think the second half of the recommended motion is actually asking for more of a detail of what you're looking for, I'm not sure I completely understand what information you want to see.
I don't know, do you want me to speak a second time for clarity?
Absolutely.
I'd like to see an update on this, the report that we had at Committee of the Whole. Just as is worded, I mean, the recommended motion is a recommended motion, the motion that is on the floor is to bring back an update to the report that you see on page sixty seven in April. And we can compare it to now and see what the progress looks like. And I really don't think that's too much to ask, given that there is two point three million dollars worth of taxes outstanding.
So
And it's, I mean, for clarity, I mean, it's not an attack on individuals, it's a it's a comment on process, the process isn't working, and we can be where we're at here.
Is there a policy that you would like to enhance for that?
I've I've said what I need to on this, I would like to see this report again in April.
All right. So the amendment, if everyone is ready for the amendment, is to bring an update to the Committee of the Whole in April twenty twenty five. All right, so on that amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
Three, four, five, unopposed? That motion, that amendment carries. So the original motion with the amendment that council received the property tax receivable report up to December thirty first, twenty twenty four as information, and bring an update to Committee of the Whole in April of twenty twenty five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Two, three, four, five, six, and opposed. Two, seven and two, that carries. All right, thank you. And the next item is five point three, which is the policy three four zero five dust control program, page seventy two of your agenda package. Pardon me, page, yeah, page seventy two. All right. So this one has a to direct, the recommendation is to direct administration to revise policy three four zero five dust control program as presented. And the revisions are on page seventy four and seventy five. Councillor Hall?
I would be prepared to move a motion to direct him to revise thirty four oh five dust control program with the the alteration to what we've we're seeing, and that is to, under part three point two, to keep the language under part five, three point two, part five, and insert the word plus. Each applicant is is eligible to purchase an additional dust control product at cost. Where the the reason this is in front of us is we wanted to create the opportunity for someone to purchase additional dust control at cost. But to delete the line, we're taking out something that's unrelated to that. The purpose of part five was to allow those individuals who are on a corner to get two purchases at the fifty fifty share, cost share. And there was no discussion in our past meeting about removing that from those people. So I I think as I recall, the discussion and intent and will of council, it was to create the opportunity for people to purchase more. So retaining the original language, inserting the word plus in front of each, and then keeping the other red, red line comments.
Okay.
That would be the motion that I propose.
Okay. Is there any, go ahead councillor?
That makes sense, so because we had said that if you were on a corner, you could have to and then they they should both be a cost. And I just want to make sure that, or not make sure, but I just want to point out that the reason that I had worked with my community to get I want to say people to have one section is because there is issues with people using dust control in neighbor waters and don't want to see that continue, so it is just a corner, and I see that it'd be no issue. Being at the same price if you have to get those two applications.
Okay.
Just don't want to go back down the old road, so to speak.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Mintz?
I'm I'm in agreement of 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 half of it, keeping the wording of each applicant is eligible for one two hundred meter fifty fifty cost. With all that, remove the the pieces that are jotted out. But regarding the additional dust control, I'm not, I'm not I'm not in favor of that. We we spend a lot of money on dust control through this county and and it's it just gets astronomical, the amount of subsidizing that we do for for dust control and the reason that we had taken this out to buy extra dust control was due to exactly what councillor Capitanic just said, neighbor, neighbor contentious issues. Some people want it, some people don't. I think two hundred meters is is good enough, usually in front of people's places, it's it's more meant for for to keep the the dust out of the out of your house and and stuff like that. But that on another cost, I don't, I don't think that's very effective for us, and and we're just going to get in some arguments. Every time something changes here, we end up opening this up and and we opened it up just regarding an actual development permit idea and and we didn't go that way, we actually just went on to add on extra dust control, it's like to me, that's I'm not in favor of that. I'm just letting you know right now.
Thank you councillor Wall.
Um, I guess I, to clarify, you're saying the additional cost is subsidized? Like the actual two hundred meters?
Uh, yeah, it will be because it's it costs more than than just for the product to to put this stuff down, what if we need extra gravel, what if what if we need extra, you know, you've got a water truck out there, you got, you got everybody's time. I don't think anybody realizes how much time is put into dust control.
Thanks for asking my question, just to continue.
I answered your question, and I'm just, I'm just going on, I'm just going on. It it takes a lot of time to to do dust control in this organization. And and if we just keep allowing people to add it on and add it on and add it on, it organize it. The cost to reorganize a lot of this stuff is is astronomical, and and it's like we made it, we made a dust control policy, and we've only run it for a year, and and we're already changing it. It's like, oh, my lord, we we need to just let it run its, let it run again for a year, and then we'll see.
Thank you for letting me have the floor back. I I don't agree, two hundred metered isn't enough for a lot of people. A lot of people even live on straight stretches with a lot of traffic, and two hundred meters doesn't even cover the yard. So their houses are still getting dusty, there's still a lot of dust coming in the yard. I don't think allowing people to purchase extra dust control is that big of an issue. The guy's already there, it's already getting done. Why not make a little bit extra money on it? Whatever. This is a safety issue too with people when they're coming up on a house or big trucks are pulling into yards, and there's not enough dust control to see when they're stopping. So this can be, I think, a good thing for the community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right. I also have concerns with regards to the cost because it is quite extensive when you're bringing all of that equipment out. You're referring to graders, you're referring to gravel, you're referring to water trucks, you're referring to time. And this could actually hinder our program by adding on so much more work for what we need to do to get done. The original reason why this came back was again because we had a resident with a concern with a commercial entity in their in their area. And I'd like to touch on that because it's really important to understand that this policy that we have in front of us removed the guidelines that used to be in in the policy for our administration to have a guide that when we look at this policy and there's a discrepancy or dispute or a concern, it can be brought to the Director of Infrastructure Services for resolution or escalation to the C A O or County Council. But without the guidelines, we are all in a gray area. So it it creates a situation where residents are looking at this, we have a concern. What are the guidelines that we work within? And administration is is looking at us. What would you guys like to see? Instead of being able to have a clear cut, black and white, out of the gray, this is the guidelines we work within. When we look at the development permits, which I pulled for that particular area that we had the concern brought forward, that came from the M P C minutes back in twenty twenty, January of twenty eight. And the the condition of that development permit is the owner developer shall be responsible for dust control along the route if the county deems dust control is necessary during the operation of the development. So once again, that puts the onus back on the county, which is administration, to make that decision. And if they don't have any guidelines in which to make that decision, it comes to council. So we're having this battle on a regular, coming back and forth, back and forth. And I would personally like to eliminate that battle and give administration the guidelines that they need to be able to do their job and give the public the ability to see, okay, then I understand what that policy says. So I would also like to add on a secondary motion when we get through this with regards to that particular situation that we've we've put ourselves in. We have twelve or thirteen of these development permits, and we're we're back in the gray. Policies and bylaws need to be straightforward, they need to be clear, and they need to be I guess you could say time-saving, so that we're not having to have this argument every time dust control pops up when somebody is upset. So we're sitting here at the at this time with a request to have a motion that is revising the policy, but leaving in item three point two V, leaving the wording there as it exists, adding the word plus, and each applicant is eligible to purchase additional dust control product at cost. I am not in favor of the plus each applicant is eligible to purchase, because again, I agree that it's very cost, it's expensive, it it definitely is expensive, we've lowered the cost of the product to our residents, which is a huge I guess, discount is the best way word I can use at this time. So I would like to add a secondary motion for consideration to discuss before we go into well, I guess we'll have to wait until this motion's dealt with, and then I'll add the secondary motion, but is everybody? Councillor Anderson?
Thank you. I am in favor of allowing residents to add additional dust control simply because I've heard from a couple of residents now who feel that dust control is more of a safety measure, and they don't mind paying full price to have additional dust control, not necessarily near a dwelling, but near specifically one location is where beekeepers are turning into their beehives. They feel that they create enough traffic and enough turning, but it's a very dusty location, and they want to ensure the safety of the traffic going by. And for that reason, I am in favor of allowing residents to decide if they feel that there's a safety concern and are gonna pay for the service to be able to purchase extra sections of dust control. And in addition, I would be opposed, I've always been opposed to expecting campgrounds specifically to pay for dust control along other people's residences or dwellings, because I feel that that is specifically targeting small businesses in our area. And we've heard on multiple occasions that many campgrounds have multiple access points or subdivisions near them or other things that are causing increased traffic as well, and expecting them to be the only ones paying for additional dust control is not reasonable in my mind.
Thank you. Councillor Cromwell?
Thank you. I understand both the different bits here, but I think I actually agree that the ability to purchase additional dust control is a safety issue and does need to be looked at, and there are many stretches where you're right, it is not enough, and it is not viable enough. And actually, the the comment on bees hit me very hard, I'm a big bee guy, and I realize how important they are to the world that we live in. And, you know, even to see that their hives are protected from that travel. I think an amendment to what councillor Hall had put up would be the line item at the end going, if all dust control is purchased at the same time, and then it makes sense to do it at cost. I think some of the the conversation we had would be, well, if we have to bring trucks back, because now they're adding a second application, they're doing it later, that's where I think our costs are going to come in more as a detriment. Instead of being able to look at doing it all at one time, I would have a caveat on there that it would have to be a one-time purchase in order for that to happen.
Thank you, just for clarity, when it says each applicant is eligible when they apply, I believe that that would be covering that they have to have it done at the same time. I I would like to put that over to administration though for clarity on that.
Could you specify exactly what you want, Claire?
So we wanted to mention an amendment that made sure that people were not allowed to that people had to make the application at the same time for every section of dust control that they're willing to pay for.
Right, my, if I may, Madam Chair, occasionally we'll get an application that comes in later that we deal with, and I want to make sure if we're doing it at cost, applicant Joe, no, right, asked for his two, his two corners and then realized it's not enough, now wants us to come back to buy that third one. My caveat for it to be done at cost would be all three would have to be purchased at the initial time, and there would be no going back to add a an additional section of dust control.
Madam Chair, our interpretation is all applications are subject to the deadline.
Okay, that covers it, so we don't need your amendment, okay, thank you councillor Mintz.
So the way the way I'm looking at this right now is how convoluted this is going to get. Now, we were talking about adding dust control on to existing dust control that somebody actually got. Now we have another councillors coming in saying that we should be doing them by bees, by bee yards, we should be doing it, where's this gonna end? Like, like, like we've taken a residential dust control program, and I tell you right now, we're blowing it up. Blowing it up into like we're gonna do in front of in in front of barnyards, we're gonna do it in front of grain bins. Because everybody's got a whole bunch of green bins out there, so like, where's this at? Like, like, we've taken that perfectly good policy, and we're just making it completely convoluted now. And this is why we should not be doing this. Adding anything on. This is for residents. That two hundred meters is good enough, plant some damn trees or something.
Thank you, councillor Chamsick.
If you don't mind, Chair, I just want to refresh my memory, how many complaints did administration get about our policy? Do you know?
Madam Chair, could you restate, I didn't underst-
How many complaints was there about our last year's dust control policy to administration, is the?
I, Madam Chair, I'd have to get back to you with that, there certainly the change caused some stress. Probably more people were happy with the reduced cost than the people were that were affected by any other changes, though, because the price was reduced an awful lot.
Yeah, it was over by half, so.
Thank you. And I guess just in follow-up as well to councillor Anderson's comment when she said she's against campgrounds, having this impacted by them. It's in there, it's in there.
Madam Chair, there is a motion in the forum, and if we can keep our discussion focused to the motion, I feel like we've wandered wildly off onto unrelated topics, and I'm just not sure if it's helpful to the discussion.
Well, I'll bring it up then, I guess, when we have a secondary motion come forward, because it is important to have that clarity. If everybody- If everybody would like to go forward with the voting of the, go ahead.
Well, as the mover, I appreciate the final word, if I may. Okay, like, are we ready to call the question?
Is everyone ready to call the question on this particular motion?
Uh, so what I would like to say is I think we should just back up just a little bit and focus on the actual motion that's in front of us. We've heard a number of things uh that are quite frankly, not part of the motion and not part of the policy. So don't convolute what's going on with your relevant. Thoughts about barnyards and grain bins that that's not in the policy today. The the amendment is not changing that. The motion is is about allowing people who have already purchased dust control to add on. A little bit more. And I think it's really critical to look at the last two words, at cost. So how much more do we really think will get will get purchased when we're when we're selling this at cost? Like, I personally doubt that you would even be able to fill up your fingers if you counted them. When you're selling that at cost over the entire county for a year. And so um by definition, at cost to me means this would be net zero to the county. Therefore, the comments around, oh, it's gonna run our cost up. Well, not really. If we're charging it at cost, that to me says it's net zero. So let like, really, the motion in front of us is it it's it's a simple request to tweak a policy, not throw it out and rewrite it. Where we've trying, we've made it better last year by adding um changing the pricing by uh some penalties to encourage people to be on time. This is just one more little little adjustment to. To improve the safety and to improve the policy a little bit, but in no way does this seem to me like a a complete overhaul. We've. Three point four fixes a. A procedural issue in in the policy around who it reports and um. Three point two V accomplishes what we collectively talked about and asked admin to bring to us. From the February eleventh uh or from the January twenty eighth meeting.
So just- Just point of information from your final word, just for point of information. Um, when you mentioned at cost, it would only be product at cost that would not include the equipment and man hours.
If they're already there, how much more does it cost?
Depends on the location.
I think we have to be careful about like what we're talking about at cost.
Um, I think as we all know, it's twenty five, two hundred and twenty-five or so per hour for a grader. So it does drive up the cost for sure. In my opinion. All right, so the motion, um, I believe is to direct administration to revise policy three, four, zero, five. Dust control program as presented, but include. All of item three V and add the words. Plus, each applicant is eligible to to purchase additional dust control product at cost. Is that accurate? That satisfactory? All right. Pardon me? And three point four as revised? Yes, thank you. As uh but I believe that's part of the revision portion as well. Okay? All right. So if we're ready for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Two, three, four, five, and opposed? One, two, three, four. All right, five and four, that motion carries. So with regards to a secondary motion here that I mentioned with regards to this-
Madam Chair, just so you know, I believe our delegation is here, just so you know, if.
Thank you. Um, we'll leave this open then. Uh, five point three is, and we'll come back to that. I'm sorry, I lost track of the time. I appreciate your help there. If we can just take a recess for three or four minutes, maybe five minutes, so we can bring our delegate in, that would be great. Thank you. Thank you so much. We'll uh bring our meeting back to order here. Um, we have our Dela first delegate of today. We have Aspen View here. Um, we'll start with introductions if we could, and I'll start on my right.
Rob Minz, Division Eight, Deputy Slick Island, Lake Erie.
Good morning, Natasha Kaptenik, Manook, New Pine Creek, and Collington.
Good morning, Joe Gerlock, Deep South Rochester area, Division One.
And good morning, Gary Cromwell, Far North, up to and including Wondon River and area.
Morning, Camille Wall, Division Nine, North of the River.
Kelly Chamsak, Grassland Areas.
We have uh Brian Hall, who stepped out, uh Division Four. Um Ashton Andrews, Counselor Ashton Anderson, she's in on Zoom, Division Three. Up there in the Boyle area, Bayonne area. Um, we have Mr. C A O Bob Beck. We have our reporting secretary, Leah Blair, and we also have our communications manager, Jordan Schenkelberg. And I am Tracy Holland, Counselor for Division Five, uh which is east of Athabasca, so Paxton, uh Amber Valley, Part Few areas. If you'd like to go ahead, stay with your introductions.
Good morning, everyone. So my name is Candyna Capila. I'm the current Board Chair.
Uh, Annie Karsmarcek, I'm the current Vice Chair.
And I'm Constantine Castrino, Superintendent of Aspen View.
And then we do have a couple other trustees that do serve the county. We have Dennis McNeil was unable to make it today. And also Brenda Fullmore up from the Smith area and her ward dips down south. So. Thank you for having us here today. Uh, I'm not sure if everybody has met Mr. Castrinos. He has been. Been, well, Tracy, you just met him now, but uh um he's our relatively new superintendent. That uh came aboard with us last summer. So he's got a good year and some in and we're happy to be here. Our municipal meetings are really important to us. To touch base with our municipalities and let you know what's happening in Aspen View and. Open the floor for questions. We we are proud of all of our schools within the county. We serve quite a few schools, as you're gonna see in the slide. And we just wanted to give you some stats and some updates about some of our county schools. So I'm going to turn it over to Miss Mr. Castrinos and he'll lead a lead us. And if there's any questions, just please ask along the way.
Thank you so much. So I just wanted to start by saying that the goal of today is just to be able to provide updates. Uh, the various schools that we serve in communities. Also toward the end, uh you know, we ask about how it is that we can continue to build partnership. Uh, providing in in this year, we're gonna focus on trying to give students positive opportunities within communities. To do things that are public facing, but also positive. I stress that because sometimes with students, especially as they get older, there's criticism around how they behave in the community. How they present themselves potentially. And we're just wondering if there are any opportunities for students to volunteer or to extend themselves within the community. In ways that that serve people that are in need and and as part of their of their extended community. So that that'll be the focus of this year's uh ask. I also wanted to just front load something for everybody here because if you look through the package, you'll notice that Rochester School isn't listed within the package. Rochester School is uh slated to close at the end of this year and it's been a very and continues to be a very uh passionate and engaged conversation. And out of respect for the people of Rochester and for the school, we didn't want to post enrollment numbers and the rest of that. Uh considering that the school is closing at the end of the year. I will say though that uh to provide an update first and foremost from them. That some of the things we're doing now, beginning now in February and extending into March and April, which is pre-enrollment for next year. Um, I've directed all of our principals to reach out from Athabasca to those parents in Rochester. Um, by age and welcome them and offer them opportunities to come into the schools in Athabasca. To do whether it is a private tour, it could be to come in and explore the school itself, the layout of the school, meet some teachers, things like that. So we're gonna have activities for the students to do some transitioning for families that are choosing our Athabasca schools. So I just wanted to put that right up front for you. So beginning, um, we have overall. It's okay. Yeah, thank you. Uh, we have some overall enrollment, uh five-year trends at the beginning of the package. It's up on the screen for you as well. If you, if you have, we see a bit of a um a a dip from the last year, the last couple of years. Uh, still higher than the dip in twenty twenty-one, which was at two thousand four hundred and ninety-one students. Uh, but that is our five-year trend and we're currently uh projecting to be in the same neighborhood of about twenty-five eighty for next year. Uh, if we look at our, the next slide after that, which is our Athabasca Schools, E P C, L T I S, and WIPS, the ten-year trend. Um, they're pretty stable for the most part. There's some um a little bit of a decline in E P C. As you can see, from seven forty-nine, we had a very large graduating class last year. We have another large one this year. Of about a hundred and fifty-one students, as you can see there in grade twelve. Um, but uh, how, yeah, yeah, however. But um we're also seeing um a a little bit of lower enrollment coming in at uh at WIPS. School, uh where traditionally we're seeing numbers of around a hundred for K. Uh, we will be inhabiting, seeing some numbers around seventy uh for kindergarten. So the reason I bring that up is because there'll be uh adjustments going forward for that enrollment. What it will mean is a little bit of smaller class sizes. It'll mean um a little bit more room within the school for programming. Um, so those are the trends. Uh, and of course, L T I S follows suit. Because you know, the kids that are whips move through there. We don't see uh a loss of enrollment typically from whips to L T I S. But those are the numbers uh there. And Boyle ten-year trend, as you can see, um, is on the increase, so about twenty students. Uh, we see increases in Boyle. Uh, we saw some increase in grassland as well, as you'll see. Uh, about twenty students there as well, which was a big, that was a big jump for for grassland, but twenty, about twenty students in Boyle. What I like uh here is that we have about twenty students graduating in Boyle, but we have about twenty coming in as well. So it's it's showing that we're gonna remain pretty stable there.
Yeah.
Okay, in grassland, which I mentioned, we see the spike off of the fifty that we had previously to seventy-five this year in September. And um, I really like grassland. I mean, I never, I didn't know much about grassland before, but I've spent quite a bit of time there now. Um, uh with Principal Earl, he's doing a really good job of creating positive school culture in the school. And uh getting parents back into the school. And I was there for different events, most recently their Christmas concert. Um, it was really amazing. It was amazing to see just the-
Very tight community.
Yeah, the vibe in the school.
And I think Principal Earl has done a really good job as to reaching out into the peripheral communities. To try to draw some of those students back that or or historical families back that used to be in and that could be in the White Russian community and ambience.
And that's what he said. That's what I learned by talking to him is that quite a few of the students that have come in that represent this influx. Are families whose parents, like the kids' parents went to the school but and wanted to kind of return their families to that school. As opposed to Plamond and or some of those other choices. Um, if we keep going, we'll see staffing first with whips in terms of how much staff and staffing is in the school. We have twenty certificated staff. Some of these numbers will go up and down throughout the year based on leaves or other things. But these are numbers as of September thirtieth sixteen, support staff, which is educational assistance, admin assistance. Of course, we always value the support we get from the county around our uh F S L. Uh, W partnerships and 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 the grant monies for that. Uh, we have a family school liaison worker that supports whips. And of course, when we flip to L T I S, it's very similar. We have sixteen certificated staff, ten support staff. And the F S L W as well, through the partnership with the county. And lastly, with E P C, forty-five certificated staff members. We still have a couple of job uh advertisements out for E P C that we're trying to fill. Um, um, we've been trying to fill those and we're, you know, beat the bushes, if you will, for some teachers for a few months now. Uh, most recently, I was at a couple of recruitment fairs, one at Concordia, which by the way, does a tremendous job. Um, with their education grads, they're 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 really well-prepared and trying to get uh interest. Eh eh rural interest. We're doing some things this spring, which I think are different. We're gonna try uh. Um, we've actually signed up students from the U of A and from Concordia who are graduating this spring. And one thing that we are doing is we're getting uh transportation to pick them up. And then we're gonna bring them out to our areas and to our county and tour them around. Show them the schools, show them the, you know, uh, the towns, um, some, some of the amenities, those types of things. Show them that it's not that far away, because sometimes they're concerned about that and 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 have an opportunity for them to interact a bit. You know, with the community. So we're just trying some different things to create recruitment uh awareness for new grads.
Rural sustainability.
Yeah, yeah.
And I just wanted to add, I think you mentioned yesterday that that was kind of something that we learned from the uh regional health recruitment retention. Is bringing uh, you know, certificated people or people interested in showing them the area, showing them the town, the schools. So that was a learning, I think, you know, we took from that. And I just think if, you know, we continue to do that and promote the area, not the county.
Yeah. Uh, and then uh we have the cave in here as well, which is an outreach. Uh, obviously an outreach program for us. We have four certificated staff members. And the support staff member, our current enrollment is about thirty-two students that fluctuates a bit. And just to give you a little bit of an update without saying too much, because I can't yet, we are working on revisioning the cave. And just to give you a little bit of an update without saying too much, because I can't yet, we are working on revisioning the cave. Uh rebranding it in terms of like, you know, what it's called and how we kind of put it out there in the online world.
It's very dark name.
Yeah. Yeah, like, I'd like to go learn at the cave. Yeah, so, so but we're gonna, we're gonna revision that um and rebrand that. We're also going to try and increase the reach of it so that it's not just our school division in our counties, but maybe uh across the province. Because with online digital learning now, um you know, you can do that from anywhere. And if you offer a good enough product, you can get people enrolling from all parts of the province. That happens uh quite regularly. So we're working on that and uh really excited about what potentially could happen there.
It's about staying up with the times, because that's what school divisions are doing now, is, is developing virtual programs. That, that are far re, farther reaching than your actual uh square footage of your school divisions. So it's keeping up with the times.
And that's because like, I mean, and you know, you all know this, like, but since COVID, um some of those artificial barriers. Or some of those barriers that have set up about where students can attend school or where students can be uh have gone away. And students can really, they can go anywhere now almost uh through this virtual learning piece or online piece. So uh that's just something we have to evolve to as well. Uh Boyle School, we have eighteen certificated staff and thirteen support. Uh of course, the FSLW worker as well. Um and our new principal there, who's in his second year now. Jason Mustaine from the Stinzik's doing a, a really great job and just uh, and just working with the community and, and, and building some positive school culture. And then we have grassland, we have six certificated staff members, five support staffs, so almost one-to-one there. Um family school liaison worker and a really great community that gets into the school and supports. Um can't forget about our colony schools. We have Athabasca Colony, New Pine and Deep Creek. Uh and just a little bit of update from colony education stance. Um. Um these are, these are numbers that are, that are increasing. We're seeing increasing enrollment in our colony schools. Uh so, you know, we're working closely with um the leaders there to just offer the best, the best delivery model that we can. And working together with them. But as you can see, there's even EAs, like we have three EAs that are dedicated.
So currently Aspen View has four colonies within our division, but there are two more in Thorhill area. That are being currently built, so we will be up to six colonies in our division.
Yeah, yeah. And so the last slide's uh just entitled Working Together and um, you know, that's something that. It's a priority for me as superintendent. I know it is for our board as well, this idea of engagement. And this year, I just, as I um alluded to earlier, it's about trying to get students out in community in a positive way. Uh I was motivated by this, just through conversations last year, even at the multiplex about how students spend their time. Let's say on spares or lunch and maybe some of the struggles, struggles that people running the multiplex would have with some of our students. Or just what kids were up to. So um I know that that's this year, uh and hearing from Alex, the multiplex. That that's improved quite a bit because our supervision has improved and our, our staff is more dedicated to um. Supporting them in terms of who's there at the multiplex and which kids are, should be there and shouldn't be there, because they should be in classes, things like that. But it just comes to like, I guess, the, the, the visual piece of what our students are doing within the community. Like a goal for me and a go, a goal for our board is to make sure that when people think about Aspen View students, they don't think about troublemakers. They think about kids that are out there doing some positive things. So as a county, if you know of opportunities that are coming up. Where they just, you know, you could use some good old elbow grease or opportunities for, for kids to come out and, and participate. In certain initiatives, we would appreciate that. Uh our principals would appreciate that. We had a doctor who presented at the town meeting. Uh he, he's building a local um uh pro, produce garden, greenhouse type of an initiative. Uh he's from Athabasca University, so he gave me some materials and I, and I sent it to our um Jomo Kazak, our principal at LTIS. To get some kids for that. But if there are any things like that that you know about that are happening, uh in which our students could help out, we'd really appreciate those.
Well, you as counselors know your communities best. So where do, where do you need the help in your communities?
Yeah.
Right. Who do we contact? Because I've contacted some teachers and no response.
Yeah, you'll, please send it to me. Like you can, you can get a contact to me just by going on our webpage. Like a phone number is there. You can leave a message for me. I'll call you back right away. Uh you can send an email. Uh and what happens then is I'll, I'll reach out to you. Maybe we'll have a cup of coffee so I can understand better what it is that you need. And then I will choose either, either I'll approach uh the principal from your, from your area and have the conversation. Um or we'll choose what, you know, what's most appropriate or the, or the age of student that's most, most appropriate. We can have those conversations.
Well, there's, um, I think a lot of different kind of unique opportunities within the county and everything. I don't know. I'm sure you guys are aware of the mentorship program that happens uh for, in um. The school here, um you know, and that's an excellent opportunity for children to be able to give back and do some of that public service.
Yep.
Um, you know, and of course, you know, uh senior lodges and as our children are going, you know, a lot of people, a lot of children are taking those gap years. So on, so forth. But even the opportunity to be able to work with our children, whether it be coaching and volleyball, those types of things. Um making sure that they're able to have that, have those references. Um really appreciate everything that you guys do. Value the partnerships between the family liaison workers. Um having two children in two different schools, it's been great. Been pretty seamless this year and I really appreciate um the availability to have those conversations and those courses. Being seamless as.
How was the transition to a bigger school?
It was, it actually went really, really well. Um you know, the staff has been great, you know, finding the courses. Um she's taking more of an academic stream. Um has been uh beneficial and like I said, it's been so far a really great year. And for a little bit of a more of an introverted one, it's been the excellent push that she needed. And I, you know what, it was more positive than what I expected as a mom. And when you guys talk about your tours and stuff too, one of the other things that might create a cool opera, a different opportunity. I mean, I'm sure that uh some of your schools have buses, but there's also the community transportation bus that sometimes is available. To do some of those tours as well.
Yeah, so um you know, in this weather, my mind always goes to people that are stuck in their homes and communities, seniors perhaps, that just can't get out. Or they can't, you know, to, just kind of make even their area safe and what kids could do to maybe help some of that. I don't know if you feel calls like that from community members who are in need, but like those are opportunities uh as well. Any, any, we'll take any of those because uh I think that there's a, is an important piece to, to, to just. I don't know, being nice and, and uh, no, and being a good Samaritan and kind of getting back in the community. And doing positive things as a teenager especially, because I think sometimes, you know, teenagers uh today is, it's tough for them. They get criticized quite a bit for being on their phones all the time or being disconnected or things like that.
Well, goodness knows, we need some good news stories.
Yeah, and that too, right? And so.
Yeah. Um also the Meals and Wheels program might be a great opportunity as well.
That would be great.
And I mean, even reaching out to perhaps, you know, some of your egg society, some of those people within your networks might be, you know, maybe. Mrs. So-and-so might need.
So, so as your wheels are kind of turning about it, maybe you're thinking about a few, you know, different things within your communities. Just again, reach out. Uh we can have a.
Those organizations.
Or, yeah, and to me, like, if, if you want to have more of a conversation about, you know, what you're looking for and I can help to, to uh navigate that.
Yeah, thank you for this presentation. It's, it's great news all around. Um regarding the RAP program. Uh I had uh, I had a couple of, of my kids go through the RAP program and that and and uh. Relatives and, and it was, it was a huge deal to be able to go and work, work and get, get uh hours. And credits onto, onto apprenticeship program, stuff like that.
Where did they do the rap?
Actually, my one son did it with Athabasca County at the shop.
Oh, good. Yeah.
And the other one did it with uh the carpentry construction and that. So. And uh I had a nephew go through the shop too. Uh and, and it was a great, great learning uh ability there. Plus, what I like about the rap too is, is I don't hear, I didn't hear too often, but I, I know of one or two kids. That actually went into the rap program and figured out early that that is not what they want to do. And they, they went in a different avenue, right? You know, um so is it, is it a, a, an ongoing?
Sure is.
Yeah, no, it is. And um it's something that we're dedicated to and I know that for different students throughout our area. Like I'm talking about Boyle too, because this year they had some pretty tremendous opportunities and it's not rap specific, but I think it's, it's laying the foundations for that. I mean, yeah, they, they had a pretty great opportunity to get into uh portage and welding. And do some intensive week-long kind of dedications to that trade. Um and, and we want to bring more opportunities like that for students younger, you know, so it's, so it's not just about, you know, you're old enough to participate in rap. Which is great, but like just exposing them at a, at a younger age for that. Um it's something, like you said, they find out whether they want to do it. Or they don't want to do it or.
So we have a designated career counselor in every one of our high schools. So our schools are constantly looking in their surrounding communities for these rap opportunities. LPAC, of course, has been a big supporter, but we're, we're always in need of more companies. And industries that will support our rap students. So again, reaching out to you guys as counselors. You know your community's best. So if you, if you know of a company or an organization or industry, we gladly take them.
I just want to add that in the works uh again is going to be the uh RPAP uh Skills Day happening at the multiplex. Again, with uh EPC students and Boyle students. Um date hasn't been picked yet, but that has just found to be really successful. Um even if, you know, we don't get the RPAP grant, uh we're very supported by the uh committee to make that happen. And we get great support from the community for that. And then also uh, you know, the skills days that happen with um in our schools. They're participating with all the trades, you know, with carpentry and welding and cosmetology and foods and public speaking. Um was one of the things that uh came up as well, that it's not just for four H, they're, they're happening in our schools as well. And they're happening also at a junior high level. They're not just waiting till they get to grade ten, so they can grow through that program. So the schools have been great about giving those kids those opportunities to either go to Slave Lake or to Edmonton. And if all goes well, they even have an opportunity to go to nationals. So um we've had a lot of success with that and we're still continuing to promote that. So.
That's fantastic. Counselor Cromwell and then Counselor Wallack.
Thank you. I'm going to get some groans from the people behind me here, but I'm going to give you a little bit of a test. Now, I couldn't do this on my own. Thank you to uh Jen Alpha Translator. I'm hoping that you can understand what I'm trying to thank you for. Yo, your vibe on the presentation was lit. Those programs of the squad can flex and help fire. So basically.
I'm a teenager. I know exactly what you just said.
If you can repeat that back to me, then uh we're, we're golden. But thank you for what you do. It's great to hear about the youth, the being able to step in and help.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for that. I, the only thing I understood was lit. I heard that one before. So, and fire, those two, those. I know yo, that was where I am.
Thank you, Counselor Wallack.
Can you guys speak to any um agriculture programs that you guys have going on in your um school division or anything upcoming?
Yeah, I mean, so egg specific, in terms of like an alternative program, programming? I don't know of anything that we have specific like that, but I think that it's, I've heard the conversation for it before, especially in Smokey Lake and Grassland area. So um I'm, we're open to suggestions if, if people are, are thinking there might be a, an opportunity for partnership there. Like that's definitely something we would consider.
Know the Alberta Eggs Society's, uh or sorry, Butter Eggs Service Board, um had spoken to you guys last year. And so I know they have some lot of information and.
Okay.
Wait, what was that Alberta?
No. Uh ASB, Alberta Service Agriculture Service Board.
The Service Board.
Yep.
I remember years ago, there was the green certificate program that would help with that transition, but other than that, I can't recall.
The green pro, eh, the green certificate is still current. We do, we do have uh, you know. The odd uh student that would access that program um throughout the years. It's promoted as much as rap is throughout. It, it's just that our farming families are few and far between these days. It's, it's a lot less than, than it once was. And so those opportunities are not taken as much. So.
Yeah, it's definitely changing. Yeah.
So I think, you know, you, you alluded to this and I agree with you that I think uh along with parents, schools have a role in developing good citizens. And earlier, uh the superintendent mentioned the multiplex. So my question is really aside from the hockey academy. Can you share ways that the division has worked cooperatively with the multiplex? To enhance programming and extracurricular activities uh for students in the region. So basically, what do you do to differentiate yourself and to be a place people aspire to go to?
Hmm, well, it's a goo, good question. I think that uh kn, knowing what the timetable of uh EPC specifically looks like. Because I mean, with almost eight hundred students, that would be the largest uh participant, if you will. Um. There is a lot of interaction that happens programming-wise between the multiplex and EPC. Um they're in the building every day. They use that building not just for curling and track. And the other piece is hockey academy, as you mentioned. Um but it's also a um. Yeah, swimming, it's also a school culture kind of magnet, if that makes sense. So that's where we're trying to focus this year is uh, we're trying to focus on creating positive school culture and community culture. Uh so if the students are going to be there, they're going to go there for, for their lunch, for instance, and to have lunch, that they're doing it uh in a way that's um. Respectful. Okay? That's the best way I can put it. And then we're making strides, because as I, as I did mention, um we've had meetings. So uh Sean Morrison, who's one of our principals, uh meets with um, with Alex and other members of the multiplex. To kind of get feedback on an ongoing uh basis, if that makes sense. Oh Rhonda, Rhonda Alex, right? Is that, yeah, sorry, I use her last name. Yeah, so, yeah, yeah. Miss Alex, I guess I should say, but they, they have been meeting to just make sure that things are moving in the right direction. And I, and I did receive, uh I was to seat on some communique that did say, and I went to a meeting early in the year that did say like things that are quite a bit better. So um but, but you know, you're right in the sense too that. We're always looking on how to approve our product. Like as a school division, I want to make sure that we're putting opportunities out there for kids. That attract families and kids. That's, that's the nature of advancing and being progressive in education. Um I think one thing that we are doing, and I alluded to earlier, is how we're going to offer uh not just outreach. But more virtual and uh at-home opportunities for kids as well. Uh you know, I'm not a fool and I, and it's not that I don't notice that, you know, home education is becoming more popular. So I, I'm asking the question, why? And what, what is it that we can do as a school division to pivot and offer a few more opportunities that way? Um and it could be Christian, it could be a Christian program or a Christian focus. It could be something else, right? Like I'm just using it as an example, but, but tho, those are some specific things we are considering uh, Counselor Hall.
Just getting back to the multiplex. It's not only EPC that is accessing it, where all of our county schools are accessing the multiplex. Through various avenues. Swimming is a big one. There's swimming programs in every one of our schools. Uh so that's very positive. To see. I know specifically in Boyle, um they took groups of kids swimming. The rest of the groups got access to the field house. To do whatever they wanted to do in the field house. So.
So just to add into, because uh it's not something that's been talked about too much, but I can give you a little bit of information. The other thing we're considering doing or we're working on doing is working with the university to offer. Uh I would say world-class opportunities to students, secondary students, especially in, in the sciences. Um getting into that building more and um cooperating and sharing like the lab spaces that they have built in there. We're designing some programming together that I think will be really unique and along more so uh the mandate of the Minister of Education. And being collegiate style or something that uh transcends, you know, high school, secondary students and uh post-secondary. So we're working on that currently. I think that that will be an exciting opportunity that's new for our students too.
Well, the partnership that is forging ahead between that organization, the Athabasca University and our school division. Is going to be amazing. So stay tuned for some, you know, some great announcements, I guess, program-wise. And uh I just can't say enough that the positivity uh given by that organization has been a, a breath of fresh air.
And it's not just for the EPC students out there. It's for um the students and the rest of the division.
Yeah, so the chair mentioned uh looking for some good news stories. And so I just wanted to give you the opportunity to comment on the student-teacher ratios across. the county, which look good.
Student teachers?
Your student teacher ratios.
Oh, oh, student to teacher ratio is that? Yeah, no, and.
Share anything with about that with us?
Well, absolutely, because I think and and.
Perspective from.
Yeah, yeah, and and I when I first came to ask of you, I mean, I'd been at Grand Yellowhead before, um so it's rural division, but still not to the same extent as uh we are here. Like our ratios, when it comes student to teacher, our class sizes, but then also the ratio in terms of um how many admin assistants or, you know, support staff we have in with students uh is is rare. Like, I mean, especially coming from an urban setting where I spent twenty years, y- you wouldn't see thirteen EAs in the school with sixteen full-time staff members. Like you just wouldn't see that ratio. You would see more like four or five EAs with sixteen. It's usually about half as much, I would say. Um and having class sizes around twenty, you know, and in some cases smaller than that, uh those are, those are um really, but those are positive uh instances for all of our kids. Um we wanna, I mean, it's a priority. We want to keep that there. It's always a challenge each year with with our, you know, allocation and our budget, but it is a, it is something that is a positive.
Thank you for that. We've just got a couple minutes left. Anything to add there? Um and if I may, um I would just like to thank you very much for being here today and for all the work that you do do. I also have a student in in EPC and he's excelling and loving every minute of it. So that's huge and it makes mom happy. Um but the cave, this the center of alternative um and virtual education is such a huge asset in this community and allows the kids to ladder up, it allows allows them to adjust their schedules if they're going to choose to work. I think it is such an amazing program and and would like to thank you very much.
And it's accessed by the entire school division virtually, so.
Absolutely. It's absolutely fantastic.
If you, if you enjoy it, that's really great to hear. Thank you for that feedback. And I think that, you know, as you stay tuned into next year and that, I think the changes or the or the enhancements that are coming, you'll look, you'll really appreciate. So.
Absolutely. No, thank you very much. Um, how's your hall?
Um, this was in the news a little while ago and the uh last time the division visited, there was a question about cell phone uh restrictions in the schools. And I think the answer was that it's a parent's responsibility. So now that the minister has weighed in and made it a division responsibility as well, kind of a shared thing. Do you have any, want to share any comments on uh what you've observed since that's been in place and how it's impacted the schools in a positive or less positive way?
Sure. No, thank you for that question. Um I think overall it's been really positive. I I mean, hey, am I gonna sit here and tell you that all the teens love the fact that they can't have their phones in school? No, that's not what I'm going to say. But was there grumbling? Yes. Was there a lot of finger pointing in the beginning saying like, you know, I'm not allowed to have my phone and you made me take my Apple Watch off and I can't have any of these things anymore. My teacher has a cell phone. So we went through those growing pains. And so I had to outline for staff, Counselor Hall, it's like when you can use your cell phone, like you can have it if it's part of your your job for the day or a part of your assignment, or you're on a field trip, or it's an emergent need or whatever. So those are the pieces we're trying to balance and still trying to balance right now. But I, what I can say is the amount of drama, for lack of better words, that is happening first thing in the morning on a Monday after a weekend or something like that, or after we've had bus cancellations because of social media in classrooms. The distractions uh in the learning spaces have decreased. We're getting that feedback from from teachers uh and students, and we're hearing that at our school council meeting. So those are the positives.
So it's been good overall.
I believe so, yeah.
Sitting in our school councils, our parents have thanked us profusely.
Yeah.
Uh for making this decision because obviously they didn't have that control over their students. So or or over their child.
Just for clarity, wasn't it the minister's decision?
So yeah, it was the minister's decision, but what I will say is that A- Aspen View did go beyond the base, what what I would say the base model of what the minister wanted out there. What he said was he doesn't want cell phones in instructional spaces, like that was the key. We took it beyond that to say we don't want them in schools unless there's a designated time that's allowed for that to happen. And we also extended it to staff in 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 saying, the the minister didn't say that, but to model and to kind of uh put a boundary around when they can use it. So we we've done some extras there.
And it's interesting because Aspen View was in the midst of preparing
Yeah.
their own admin procedure on cellphone use prior to the minister announcing. So.
So that's fantastic.
We were, we were gonna be there anyways.
It it's a huge plus. It absolutely is. Um I I've seen a difference as well. And again, I hate to cut it short, we do have another delegate arriving, but thank you so very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Gerlock's waving.
Yeah, um I think people have come to grips with the fact that the bells won't be ringing in Rochester in September. So now that they're forced to recognize that, then the next question is what becomes of the school? Because the playground is there and playgrounds can't be moved, you know, and meet codes and and like what is the future of that building?
So that's that's a huge question and I it's a great question, but it's a really big one and I that I can't fully answer right now. But what I can say is the government of Alberta has put new uh laws into place around the about how school boards deal with their properties. And so the first ask will be to them around what their desire is for it. That that's what the we have to do. And so we're still waiting for them to respond. Um it's their right of first refusal.
Yeah, some people have talked about how could we re- repurpose the building and they're prepared to dig in pretty deep, but they would like to know that there might be some poss- what the possibilities are. Do they go to all the work and effort and and whatever just cost?
Yeah, and I I I appreciate that a hundred percent. It's just we don't, it's not our call at this moment. We have to ask the government for their for their input as to what they want to do. And so that they're not in a hurry right now to do that. And yeah.
So their approach then be to the to the MLA or?
Yeah, it could be, it could be a question for your MLA too. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you again.
Thank you, everyone.
So appreciate you being here today and and uh come back anytime. Yeah, we'll take a a three-minute recess. Absolutely. Yeah. Good morning. Thank you so much for being here today and welcome. Um we are on a bit of a time crunch, so we do have to try and and make sure we stay within the fifteen minutes if if we can, please. Um and if we can start with introductions uh on my right.
Morning, uh Rob Minz, uh Division Eight, Baptiste Lake Island area.
Morning, Joe Gerlock, Rochester, Parable Area, Division One.
Good morning, Gary Cromwell. You know me. Thank you for being here today.
Good morning, Camille Wallack, Division Nine.
Kelly Chams is Division Seven, Grassland, uh more Prospida areas.
Brian Hall, I live in Division Four.
We um just stepped out or arriving quickly. We'll be uh Counselor Capitanic in Division Two, Colton, Pine Creek and Manuk. She'll be in shortly. We have on Zoom, uh we can't see her right now, but it's C- Counselor Anderson is on Zoom in Division Three. I'm Tracy Holland, uh Counselor Division Five, which is uh east of Athabasca, Paxton, uh Parkview and Amber Valley areas. Um and if you'd like to go ahead, oh, pardon me, Counselor Beck, uh Counselor Beck, CIO Beck has stepped out, but he's coming in right now. And we have Leah Blair, our recording secretary, as well as uh Jordan Schenkelberg with Communications. Um you know your microphone to press a button to be heard. Um and if you'd like to go ahead and introduce yourself, that would be great.
Yes, yeah. Okay, I'm Anik Mossich and this is Lisa Penny. Together with our husbands Kevin and Darren. We are the fundraising group that we've heard you guys refer to a few times in in your meetings. Um truly, it's Lisa and I, but we'll include the spouses. They help us out every every now and then. So um with that, we'll get started. We know we're under a time crunch and I'll try to fly through this as quick as I can. So welcome to Wandering River, our community, our identity, our funds, our sign. So how on earth did we get from this Wandering River sign purchased with our funds to this Athabasca County Community Sign purchased with our funds? Uh before we can answer that or we think we can answer that, we want to tell you a little bit about ourselves, um our history of fundraising in our community and how we how we began. So bear with us for a minute here. So we, the Mossiches and Pennies, are lifelong and seventeen-year residents of Wandering River. As campground owners, we have always acknowledged uh the impacts, both positive and negative, Gary would know, that our businesses have had on our small community. And we've always uh worked hard in our community to establish positive relationships and to make our community a better place. So how it all began, in twenty sixteen, the influx of evacuated Fort McMurray residents greatly compounded that impact. As hundreds of evacuees took up short-term residence in Wandering River Campgrounds, including ours. The community welcomed displaced residents with open arms and within a few days of the evacuation, the student population in our school tripled from twenty-five to seventy-five students. And you can read about that in Appendix One, the article uh from Town and Country. These families were extremely grateful to our, for our school and for the generosity that our community had shown them. To this day, many refer to our community as their happy place or their home away from home and felt the need to give back to the little community that gave them so much. Later that fall, we began to organize a Wandering River School fundraiser golf tournament as a means for our campers to do just that, to give back to our community. So in twenty seventeen, the first of eight annual campground cup golf tournaments was born. And thirty-six hundred dollars in proceeds from that first tournament were donated to the Wandering River School on our campers' behalf. In twenty twenty, we incorporated a fun little duck race um as another means of fundraising and as a way uh and as a means for those who aren't golfers to also get involved and contribute. Uh this slide just shows you a list of the recipients of our proceeds over the years, all of them within the community with the exception of stars. Uh we gave seventy-one hundred dollars to, which can, I guess we can argue they are uh they service our community or they used to. I don't know if they still do. And I wanted to put this bar graph in because I'm a visual person and it just shows that although from twenty seventeen to twenty-two, uh those groups were all, you know, great groups to give to, but the support that we got for this sign uh from the community and from a lot of people outside our community was was tremendous. So that's a visual. So why the sign? Why beautify our entrance? Well, take a look at the picture. That might be why. This section of county-owned property has been neglected for years, and that's just not my opinion. That's a fact. The lack of upkeep, care or concern for this piece of property made this location, our entrance our deal ideal for pop-up ads, including signage from other counties. Frustrated townsite business owners and residents often maintain the overgrown grass, that's a fact, and can it can even be spotted picking garbage in an attempt to beautify their townsite. The sign erected in the nineteen eighties, you can see with the red arrow, is overgrown by trees and is no longer legible. I believe it's still there. The sign erected in the early two thousands is dated, it's worn, and many feel is no longer an accurate reflection of our growing and diverse community. So after our twenty twenty-two fundraiser, we made cleaning up and beautifying our community entrance with a new welcome sign, our next fundraising cause. So where do we start? Our plan was to erect a new sign on county property, your property. So in May of twenty twenty-three, prior to announcing our signage IDR, our plans, the county was contacted by myself in order to gain an understanding of the process and any requirements. I was put through the infrastructure services where I was immediately told and in no uncertain circumstances that the county does not budget for hamlet signage. Despite no intentions of seeking county funding whatsoever, to be very clear, we have never asked for county funding. When it was uh understood that we were planning to fundraise, I was given ATS Traffic's information as someone the county uses for their signs uh and was told to reach out to them for a design and quote, permit shouldn't be a problem because they're reputable company, all that stuff. Um so our path forward was then established. We knew what we were gonna do. We got the quote. Uh that's Appendix Two, I believe, which includes uh installation, by the way. So ATS was contacted after a few back and forth emails. We settled our on our design. I was given a quote. In June, our fundraising project and financial goal was announced and we set out on two years of fundraising. So this is the sign that we received that over overwhelming support for, as you saw a few slides ago. So overwhelming meaning a hundred and twenty golfers, uh two pages. So I know it's redacted, your copy. So a hundred and twenty golfers paid twenty thousand, two hundred dollars to play. I'm gonna jump ahead to the ducks, five hundred ducks sold, which brought in ten thousand dollars. And then last but not least, our generous sponsors and donors, we got amazing door prizes. Uh but we were given twenty thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars in cash towards that sign. Right? Uh the next slide. So I wanted to throw in a few pictures. Uh the the first one is of our last golf tournament. It's not of any significance, but that's that's what we see every year when we host these. Uh thank you to IPC. Their name hasn't been redacted, so I'm assuming I can speak to it. Um International Petroleum Corp showed up the morning of our tournament with a twenty-five hundred dollar check to go towards our sign. So and it should be noted that IPC operates outside of our county. They operate north of Wandering River in uh Lakeland County, and they still gave us twenty-five hundred dollars. And the last three, uh the picture, last picture is three ducks uh winners from last year's duck race. So we not, we not only met our goal, we exceeded our goal. We submitted our permit application in September of last year. And that's when our application was taken to this council for funding consideration that we did not ask for. Our project was literally taken out of our hands and it has been the topic of debate ever since. I think a few things we can all agree on is that the county of Athabasca did not and still does not budget or have a strategy or a standard for standard for hamlet signage. And we weren't informed of a branding standard or strategy back in May of twenty twenty-three, when I made my first contact with the county. Or again, in September twenty twenty-four, when that permit application was. Or again, in September twenty twenty four, when that permit application was dutifully submitted. Here are examples of a couple of signs that are inconsistent with the standards that you guys want us to have. So the Village of Boyle has four signs, no county logo, no county slogan. Grassland Hamlet has two, no county logo, no county slogan, no county color. But I'd say good on them, it's their county, it's their identity and it was probably their funds, so. You know, all the more power to them, Rochester, I heard has a sign, I haven't seen it, I can't include it in that picture. So yet, despite not having any kind of standard, the following motions were made on January fourteenth at your council meeting. That we must change our sign from black to county blue, number two, we must insert the county of Athabasca logo on our sign. Number three. Change our slogan from live work play to an Athabasca County Community. And last but certainly not least, and what really didn't go unnoticed was the community pays for it all. Because the following motion was also made and it was passed, moved by Counselor Minns. That the council directs administration to purchase and install the sign as presented, meaning one, two and three. Utilizing our funds. The above motion, as worded, is not only unfair, we feel it's pretty unreasonable. And it's also not possible because you can't purchase anything with our funds and had anybody read the quote that I submitted in September of last year. It would have showed that it included installation, so, but yet it passed. So our thoughts behind our design for our sign, so first impressions are everything. Wandering River is highly visible due to the significant traffic it sees daily, therefore, a new sign is very much needed and it's wanted, as you saw. The first impressions today are really not impressive at all. So why the black color? Well, we felt it's modern, it's definitely unique. And maybe it's just an ode to our old nineteen eighty slogan Gateway to the Oil Sands. For anybody who lived there or drove past, you would have seen a big sign with a big black highway. Headed north, gateway to something bigger, better, get your gas, keep going, that's that's the impression, the impression that I got. So why our chosen slogan? We've been gateway to the oil sands and our current sign says gateway to the north. But maybe we don't want to be a gateway anymore, a gateway is an entry or an access to something else. And we don't want to be that access to something else, something bigger, something better. We want families to live here and so should this county. Wandering River is surrounded by various opportunities and industries, hence work. What makes Wandering River truly unique and what I personally am most proud of is its is its beauty. An abundance of recreational opportunities, we have crown land, campgrounds, an amazing golf course. Driving range, paintball park, fishing pond, ATV track, hunting, all of which you guys approved. And two beautiful rivers flow through our community, Wandering River is an amazing recreational hub, hence play. So what do community members and supporters think of the motion to purchase? Pretty much a county sign with our funds. You can probably imagine what they had to say, but you can read about all their comments in Appendix Four. And you probably won't be that surprised. So in summary, a few points we would like you guys to ponder is we fundraised for our sign for two years and we have been entrusted with thirty two thousand dollars. And donations after all the bills were paid. There, right now, there are inconsistent styles, colors, non-county branded signs throughout this county, but for whatever reason. Wandering River has not been given the same autonomy or respect in choosing the design for our sign. The January fourteenth motion that took our community's authority or autonomy away. From any and all decisions about our fundraised money. Our sign and our identity has further fractured the already fractured rapport between our community and this county. We never asked for counting funding. Our only ask was for a permit and it was in September during the permit issuing process when our project was taken forward to council. For funding consideration. And we want to stress that although we truly believe that that decision to do so. Was very well intended and I understand it completely and I was in favor of it, I'll be I'll be honest, we thought it could be a win win. It should never have gone to council. We never asked for it to come to council. And we should have just simply been issued our permit, end of story. Now, this should have also been a great news story. For our little community and for this county, it may have even incentivized other hamlets to do the same. Instead, this is how the public sees this story. Especially us in Wandering River, so Wandering River gets an Athabasca County sign. Purchased with our funds, that's what it appears like. So we cannot and we will not use other people's generosity and goodwill to pay for the county of Athabasca branded infrastructure. Nor will we donate these funds to another worthy cause, sadly. There are lots of groups that could use thirty two thousand dollars, but it is not our money. And it's not, and we aren't at liberty to just give their money to a different cause. That being said, our community could very well end up with nothing to show at all for the for the thirty two thousand dollars that we worked very hard to raise. Helplessly watching the sign saga, as I call it. Unfold has taken the wind out of our fundraising sails. In September, after this project was taken out of our hands and took off in the direction that it did completely sideways, maybe backwards. We made the decision that our eighth annual and very successful golf tournament. Was going to be our last. One thing I'd really like everyone here to consider is most people want to be transparent and want to follow the right processes and they want to do the right thing. But please don't ever be perplexed when some choose to cut corners. Or not get proper permits or to not disclose information because this is a prime example as to what can happen when one does the right thing. So in closing. We are asking council now to do the right thing. By reconsidering the motion moved by Counselor Minns. That council directs man to purchase and install the sign as presented, one, two, three. Utilizing our funds and to allow us to go ahead and proceed with our sign purchased with our funds. We are also asking council to direct administration to expedite the permit application that we respectfully. And dutifully submitted back in September of twenty twenty four. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your presentation, I sure appreciate the information that you provided for us today. And all your words that you have spoken will definitely be well considered. We do have another delegate coming, I don't mean to rush, but Counselor Cromwell wanted to have the floor for a few moments.
Thank you very much. Ladies, I appreciate everything you've done. I've spoken with easily two dozen people, not including Facebook and comments. About the sign and clearly the people have spoken. And we have to remember we work for the people. I'd like to commend the citizens, you two and your husband, certainly do help out. For the incredible work you've done in the Wandering River area for almost the last decade, your efforts have been noticed in the community and now they've most definitely been noticed in this room. I am very proud to hear your passion and determination as you speak and I thank you for that. I had a rape here actually talk to me about the sign. And I was given a quote that has stuck into my mind very much the last few weeks, I'm going to share that quote with you today. All animals are equal, but some are more equal than others. George Orwell from Animal Farm. And it was truly disheartening to hear how this community consistently feels subpar to other areas of the county. I do fully believe that it was with the best of intentions that this was brought from administration to council. While realizing that you did not ask for money, funding or installation, only a permit to put up a sign. And I will remind you, as you know, I spoke to that department as well when we talked about the sign and was told the same thing you were. The county does not pay for that, that is a community initiative. And I got those very same words brought to me. Realizing we have no sign standard and that other communities have received signs in some fashion. And that our own land use bylaw does not speak to the requirements of branding. Though to you I say thank you, I personally believe your sign is beautiful. As Wandering River sits on one of the busiest economic corridors in the province. It is a stunning and picturesque place to live and raise a family. I know that such a sign will increase the visibility of our community. Increase the pride morale of the residents and be a testament of what community truly is. As this sign was truly an example of community. Something Wandering River has always portrayed as the core principle. And I know as you've even brought it up, I know a community to the north that. Tens of thousands of people would attest to these words I've just spoken. With this, this being said and realizing we're on a time crunch. When we come back to this item later in the agenda, I'm giving notice to the chair of my desire to make a motion. Directing administration.
We're off track, this is about questions to clarify the delegate.
And again, I thank you for everything that you've done for the community. Sorry for the interruption.
Appreciate the point of order, I believe you are are finished at this at this time. As as Counselor Cromwell mentioned, we do appreciate you coming here today and providing the information that you have. We'll be coming back later on in our agenda for us to have a conversation and and discussion. About your welcome to stay or you can also check it out on on YouTube, it will be live streamed and then recorded. Just quickly, does anybody have any questions for our presenters?
Counselor Chamsic. Just a quick, did you know that Stars does still service your area, just so that you are aware about.
I know they did.
Right, yeah, the fuel cache definitely helped with that, anybody else have any questions for presenters, comments, concerns? All right, thank you again for making the trip down and we so appreciate you being here today, thank you. We'll take about a three minute recess just to bring in our our next presenter.
Would there have been value in doing a closed session motion first?
Thank you very much, we are going into our four point three of our agenda, which will be in closed session, is there a motion? Counselor Cromwell has has made a motion to going to close, all those in favor? And opposed, none, that motion has passed.
Thank you very much. We are going into our 4.3 of our agenda, which will be in closed session. Is there a motion? Counselor Cromwell has made a motion to go into closed. All those in favor? And opposed, none? That motion has passed.
Like to call the meeting back to order. From our little lunch break there that we had, thanks again to admin, that was a delicious lunch, thank you. All right, on our agenda, we're just going to follow up with the last item we chatted about which is five point three. Policy thirty four oh five, the dust control program, page seventy two of your agenda package. It just in quick conversation with regards to this, once again, I had talked about earlier. That I feel like the policy is leaving a quite a gray area. For our administration as well as council, that when a discrepancy dispute or concern. Is brought forward to the director of infrastructure services for resolution or escalation to the C A O or county council. We've removed the parameters or guidelines, I guess you could say that are very helpful for administration as well as council to follow. And when we have these situations that we put gray into a policy. They're inevitable going to come back to council for direction. And I'm quite sure everybody is in agreeance that maybe the dust control policy isn't something we always want to have come back to council. So I would like to put a motion forward. To direct administration to bring policy thirty four oh five. With the addition of commercial operations guidelines to a committee of the whole meeting for further discussion. It is listed in our prior policy thirty four oh six. So I would hope that that would be the guide to give to administration. To look at those guidelines possibly and look for council support on that. So is there any? Go ahead.
Can you repeat that please?
The the motion or the motion to direct administration to bring policy three four zero five. With the addition of commercial operations guidelines to a committee of the whole meeting. Okay. For discussion, I guess for a discussion. Okay, I don't know if, go ahead, Councilor Hall.
I'm I'm. Wondering about the motion because it's a direction to provide admin to do something very specific in terms of amendments. And committee the whole had time to talk about this exact thing after January twenty eighth one, and it wasn't something that came up. And so. I I feel like it would be better to test whether council had the appetite to even. It feels like a reconsideration to me, we've already just approved an amendment to the dust control policy and and. It seems like that's sealed then for the for the year and councils not discussed whether. They generally support adding commercial operations into it and. I don't know, I I feel like we're we're re circling on something that we've just decided and trying to reopen a policy after we've just closed it.
Okay, thank you, I did mention in our January twenty eighth meeting that I would be bringing that motion forward. Because it during that discussion that we had, it. Seemed that it wasn't the time to bring that motion forward and that I would be. Bringing it again forward, so Council Wallack and then Council Cromwell.
Yeah, just going back to when we first changed this policy, I thought that's why we took out the commercial stuff was to simplify it so that we just don't do it.
No, there are development permits, once again, there are development permits out there that have a condition in them. And those conditions are, and once again, this one for this particular. Presentation that we were given, the owner developer shall be responsible for dust control along the route if the county deems the county deems dust control is necessary. During the operation of the development. And in saying that, that then puts it back to our usually our director of infrastructure and then, of course, according to our policy. To make that decision, if they don't have any parameters or guidelines to work within, it's going to come back to council, they're going to ask for that. Those questions, in my opinion, that's the way I see it, and so to avoid that and to. Like I say, policies need to be black and white, not have a whole pile of gray in it, or we're just going to end up with constantly having that conversation. So to eliminate the gray. Put it in black and white, put those some of those guidelines in, and then we don't have to worry about it, especially considering we have development permits out there. And that goes to by law, if those conditions are not followed, then it becomes another concern, so. We can't ignore our conditions of our development permits, what we can do is make the guidelines available. So that it's easier for administration to go forward and make their decisions on how that should be applied. Council Cromwell.
Thank you. I believe I spoke of this the last time we talked about it, that we have a policy where. Exactly, we have so much gray, then we have what we're going to do. Your development permit and your plan versus what we're really going to do, but then we're going to add in this trucking company, we're not going to hold that to account. We we understand that not everyone is going to be happy with how a policy is written. However, what people want is fairness. If an apple is an apple over here, an apple needs to be an apple over here. And I think that is something that we are lacking in our policy. And you you can't look at one group of people and go, this is what you're going to do. But look at the other, go, we're not going to make that apply for you, so I think there's a lot of work to do with that yet, it's not going to be. A huge undertaking, and that is the. The purpose of our committee of the whole meeting to have that open discussion with our administration, with our directors around the table and work something out that. That meets the needs of the county, I fully support the motion.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councilor Hall.
Just remembering the majority of council took this out, and now we're circling back. But I'm just, what I'm hoping for, I guess, is if the chair would explain to council how this is not a reconsideration of a motion. Because effectively, it's asking to to revisit a policy that we have just approved amendments to. And so. Just can you walk us through how this is not a reconsideration of that?
It's an amendment, the way I see it, it was of an additional motion to the one that we had just done and to bring this. Just. Follow through with what I had said the last time during committee of the whole that I would be bringing this again. Forward, because we're in a situation that if we are revising a policy, we might as well revise it completely and wholeheartedly all at once. Rather than run into this all over again, and again, I'm. Very concerned about our development permits that have these.
And and I appreciate that you're concerned in the background stuff, I just like, the question really is, we have just made a revision to the policy.
A revision, yes.
And we have just made a decision to revise policy, the matter is now closed, policy has been adjusted and touched. Now we're we're being asked to go back and revise it again, and so I'm just concerned that we're circling back on.
No, it was mentioned our earlier counselor that there would be an additional motion as we were having that conversation.
Whether you mentioned or not, I mean, the the we got told the other day, the rules are the rules, we got to obey them. And and I'm just looking into bylaw and I'm. How how is it not reconsideration, like, because it was mentioned, doesn't. It doesn't say it's not a reconsideration if we mention it first. The reality is, we've changed the policy, the policy's changed, it's closed unless we're willing to reopen.
No, it was an additional. Motion that was made in the conversation we had today, so therefore it is not completely closed. Council Anderson.
Thank you. I believe that this motion competes with the previous motion and would be a reconsideration to open up the policy for further amendments, so. I also think that we would need a motion to reconsider prior to further discussion on policy amendments.
Thank you for your opinion, and once again, as I mentioned during the conversation that we had earlier today. That there will be an additional motion before we moved on, and that's what this is. And we agreed to do a revision, this is a second revision that was asked during the conversation. Now, is there any other further? Okay. So if we're ready to vote on the question. All those in favor? One, two, three, four. And all those opposed?
Nay.
Three, four. Sorry, what was four? You were in favor, so that's five and four. Did I get that right? And that motion passes, thank you. We move on to. Item six point one, which is page eighty two of your agenda package. And this is by law zero zero five two zero two five inoperative obsolete expired spent and effective bylaws. The recommendation here from administration is that by law zero zero five two zero two five be given first, second and final reading. And would C A O like to weigh in?
Madam Chair, it was really related to. Direction related to the water and sewer charges bylaws, which are twenty twenty zero one one and twenty twenty zero one four. That they need to be rescinded because we have new operative bylaws, while we're at it, we noticed a few others. We would include to be rescinded and. This will keep coming back as we find more that need to be rescinded. So we're recommending that council adopt the bylaw rescinding those bylaws.
Thank you very much, Council Chamsik.
I'll make first reading.
You make first reading, thank you, Council Cromwell, did you have any words? Hey, good, is there any discussion? Alrighty, so on the motion to for that bylaw zero zero five two zero two five be given first reading, all those in favor.
Hi.
Thank you, that's nine and zero, is there an appetite for second reading? Council Cromwell. So that by law zero zero five two zero two five be given second reading, any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, do we have a unanimous consent to go forward for the final reading? Can your motion from Council Cromwell for unanimous consent, all those in favor? We do not have unanimous consent, so we will stop at second reading. Ready. The next item we have coming forward is on page eighty six of your agenda package, seven point one policy ninety three hundred. V H F radio system. Let's get there. And the recommendation here is that council rescind policy ninety three hundred dash V H F radio system is. Yeah, radio system, is there any way in from administration on this one? No, okay, thank you, is there any discussion, Council men's? Make the motion.
My main discussion on it or question on it would be, will this affect Public Works radio system at all?
Madam Chair. Not really, even if we didn't have a policy, if we're using a radio system, we're going to update it and keep it in good repair. We don't need a policy to do our jobs, so. But as it relates to fire, we're beyond it, but Public Works, yes, still uses radios.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. If there's no further discussion, Council, Council, Council Captain, be Jeff.
Smoke on for that question.
So. So that. So we have Council Kapitanic would like to move that council rescind policy ninety three hundred V H F radio system. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor. And no oppose, thank you, that's nine and oh. The next item we have is seven point two, which is the road closure S L dash four six seven two four dash four, page eighty eight. Of your agenda package, the recommendation. Here is that county council endorse the resolution to close a portion of road plan two three five nine E T, I believe that's in the Baptiste Lake area. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Council men's.
I guess we'll start. Is this a an S L or a L L lake lot or? Because it's got it marked down as S L.
Madam Chair. I'm going to trust that our. Land management coordinator is has the legal description correct, and it. If it says S L, then it must be S L.
Oh.
It's it, it does say that on the assessment as well.
Okay.
That answered your question, all right, does anybody else have any questions or conversations they'd like to bring forward? All right, so on the motion that county council endorse the resolution to close a portion of road plan two three five nine E T, all those in favor.
The motion.
Yeah, for me, though. Oh, I'm sorry, I guess I did. If we're ready to go for that. I made the motion that county council endorse the resolution to close a portion of road plan two three five nine E T. All those in favor?
Hi.
And no opposed, thank you, nine and oh. Seven point three. This is the provincial education requisition and designated industrial requisition credits. The recommendation here, which is on page ninety four of your agenda, that county council acknowledges and confirms the submission of the provincial education requisition credit. Perk and the designation designated industrial requisition credit D I R C for Athabasca County. Is there any conversation with regards to this one?
I'll move that motion.
Thank you. Sir, conversation, questions, concerns with this one?
Um, is that, is that the credit we're going to get to three thirty seven hundred and fifty eight?
Madam Chair, members of council, yes, that's correct.
Has that always been that much each year, or is it cut in half or?
Madam Chair and the members of council in twenty twenty three, when it was applied for, we had about twenty six hundred eighty eight dollars. For the perk and about fifty nine or sixty dollars for the Dirk.
Oh, okay, okay. I just see fifteen million, three million, and it's like. Can we get that? Thank you.
And that would be province wide, correct, the fifty, yes, all right. All right, so if there's no further questions. We'll take that to the vote, Council Anderson. Has would like to make the motion that county council acknowledges and confirms the submission of the provincial education requisition credit and the designated industrial requisition credit for Athabasca County. We're ready for the question, all those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, and no opposed. So that is nine and oh and carried. Alrighty. Item number seventy seven point four, which is on page ninety six, Aspen View Public Schools update. That is from our presentation this morning. Council Hall.
I added this to the agenda only to show respect to our delegation. To to assume that there'd be nothing to talk about afterward, I think is not okay. And I'm happy to move to receive it for information, but on the chance that there was some follow up council wanted to take as a result of that. I felt it was important we had the opportunity. So I will move the recommended motion.
Thank you, Council Chamsik. You're good, all right, is there any further comments? I know I, go ahead, Council Captain.
Speaking, I guess. As somebody who has been in the multiplex recently over the last couple of months, I will say that the school in partnership with the multiplex and keeping. I want to say that nicely, encouraging students to utilize multiplex properly has been showing progress, and I'm. Sure, all the repeaters of the county are and the town are happy to see that.
It's fantastic, that's good to hear, go ahead.
Actually, I will, when we talked about partnerships and stuff earlier, I know some of our smaller schools also. Utilized multiplex with their county grant, not only for swimming, but for curling, and I think they did a badminton or. Session in there as well, so.
Awesome. Well, that's great, no, and I also just wanted to echo from earlier, they've done a great job. Well, that's great. No, and I also just wanted to echo ear- from earlier, they've done a great job um with their, with the programming, with the extracurricular activities. Um, with staffing obviously is in good shape and and so our student enrollments are showing that as well, so I really appreciate the work that Aspen View is doing. Um, and if we have no further, go ahead.
Although it didn't come up in the delegation, I as future food for thought, as as council looks at our arrangements and agreements with the town and others. Town and county own a parcel of land adjacent and to the west of the school that there um, I'm not sure there's a lease on. And that the school division was supposed to uh build a soccer field on after the construction of the school was placed on top of an existing soccer field. And so as an outstanding item, we own land that should have a soccer pitch on it that um that I've seen very little work occur on in the last four years, so it is an outstanding matter that is something they owe to the municipalities that has not been addressed. And we may wanna reflect on that and consider whether we bring that up later.
Thank you. All right. So on the motion, if there's no further uh discussion, Counselor Hall would like to receive the delegation for information, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and no opposed, so nine and oh. Thank you. All right, and the next item we have is seven point five, the Wandering River Hamlet sign from our presentation this morning, page ninety-seven of your agenda package. There we go. And the recommendation here from administration is that council recon- that council reconsider resolution, C C two-five dash nine, made at the January fourteen, twenty twenty-five regular county council meeting, and that council provide administration direction. To um have that reconsideration done, I believe we required under thirteen point five of the procedural bylaw, it requires a two-thirds vote to do that, and we have to do that before we can go forward with discussion. So on the reconsideration of resolution, is there a motion? Do I need to, who would Counselor Cromwell would like to uh recap that council reconsider resolution, C C two-five dash nine, made at the January fourteen, twenty twenty-five regular county council meeting? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, and opposed. One, two, and three, six and three, that motion is out for reconsideration. Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you, and I appreciate uh my peers around the room that decided to give that reconsideration. To put a motion down to begin discussion. Uh, motion is to direct administration to proceed with the permit to the Wandering River Community Group for the installation of the welcome sign as designed by the group.
Okay. Did everybody catch that? Cause I didn't quite hear it. Could you say it just a little bit louder, please?
Motion to direct administration to proceed with the permit to the Wandering River Community Group for the installation of the welcome sign as designed by the group.
Thank you. All right. And discussion, Counselor Kapitanic.
I'm sorry, so short. Um, so I threw the chair to C O Beck. Um, would there be uh interest in making down the existing sign that's in the bush? That's the county had erected apparently or put up a long time ago from that presentation.
Madam Chair, your question was, would there be an interest in doing that?
The county taking that down, like if, I understand that the, from the presentation, the county put up a sign that's now covered in bush.
I don't, Madam Chair, I don't have the history of that, of who put it up.
I understood it was the county, so I thought if the county did, should they be taking it down?
Madam Chair, I know it's county land, so we have the authority to to remove whatever, if there's no permits on there. So we'd we'd have to check to see if there's any permits have ever been issued on that land and I suspect not, but I can't confirm that today.
Well, I'm just wanting, okay, thank you. I just wanted to know, do we need a motion?
Just as
Do we need a motion for that, for administration? Are you good with that? Okay.
As information through the chair to my colleague. Uh, in the time since that photo that you have in your agenda package was taken, uh the county's come and cleared away a vast number of derelict and old signs from that location. And I honestly don't remember seeing that old sign up the last time I drove in. So there is the strong possibility right now that it has been removed. And I can attest to that, but I know that they've taken a a large number of those signs and cleaned that area up.
All right. So on the motion that Counselor Cromwell has put forward, is there, yes, thank you, Counselor Anderson.
Through the chair to administration. Does the community group have a lease or any agreement in place to install infrastructure on the county's property? Or like, is there more than just a permit required? Should there not be an agreement in place, especially if they're planning on ensuring the sign going forward? Would they not need some sort of agreement to be in place for that?
Madam Chair, um likely we'd need some sort of agreement with the group if the intent is for the group to maintain ownership of the sign on county land in the long term, ma- maintenance and ownership. If the intent is for them simply to install it and it becomes county property after the fact and for us to maintain, then no agreement is really necessary. Um, there'd just be a permit issued for um A T S to do the work on the land, almost as if they were a county contractor. So it depends what relationship council desires for this, the group and the sign. Do, do they want to lease a portion of it for to the group and let them maintain it, or is council happy taking on this asset as if it's a county sign?
Well, um, if I may, um, just uh looking at the land use bylaw under nine point two-two for signs, um, it does mention in nine point two-two, section three that uh no sign shall be erected on or affixed to public property without the prior consent of the county. But it doesn't go forward in mentioning, um, you know, lease or any of that type of thing, so I'm not sure, um where the, where we would find the documents for a lease-type scenario, if the, if the land use bylaw.
Because we've never dealt with it before in this county, this is pretty straightforward in other places. For example, I'll give you it, when you drive into a major urban metropolitan area, you'll have a a sign saying Heritage Hills Community. It's usually on county, or it's usually on urban land. So there's usually an agreement with the developer or some other arrangement. So it just depends on the situation. If we're happy just taking on the sign and after it's installed, it becomes a county sign, no arrangement is necessary. If if we, if council desires it to remain with the community group, then I guess a lease might be entertained. Um, I'm not sure.
Understood, understood, thank you. Counselor Cromwell? Okay, does anybody else have any further, Counselor Wall?
So are not opposed to a sign. Um, I think it's great, and I think we've worked really hard as a council to create a county of the whole. And that's why the color, I think I would like to see it a blue, the county blue. Um, if we're trying to brand our county and take pride in our county, it would be nice to see if all the communities would actually buy in to the county. The county does a lot for everybody. Um, they maintain the roads, fire services, water, all the things. Um, so it'd be nice to see a county as a whole work as a community. Um, so I think taking pride in our county is a great thing, and I don't care what they write on it, but the color would be nice to see.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Counselor Hall?
I'm not opposed to signs either, or to a sign to uh to identify hamlets, to signs to identify um subdivisions and uh any other concentrated uh group of of rural uh residential properties that that have a name. And I think, you know, the 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 neighborhood and the people that worked hard should be commended for the tremendous amount of work they've done fundraising. But I think we really would all agree Wandering River is part of the county and not an independent community like Boyle. Um, and so I don't think it's unreasonable to ask that as part of the county, there should be some brand consistency to seek a bit of a compromise. Especially as the county works through a long, slow process of refreshing uh the look of county identifiers and brands. We've sat at this table for, you know, we're into the fourth year, and from the very first budget, we saw there was a process to redo the the entrance signs in the county. It's a slow process, but it's happening. And I think it's the responsible way to spend money to find that compromise on color so that it does have that brand consistency and avoid the uh the expense of later changing it, which I think is an irresponsible way to to use funds that are donated and a very reasonable compromise.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Chamsik.
Uh, I feel stuck. I think signs are great. I think they enhance our communities a hundred percent. Um, I perhaps am just reflecting, I think it's kind of a shame that perhaps us as a council are being the force when signs have been brought up in the past, haven't had the foresight to really look in this, but we do have our land use bylaw coming up, and I think, you know, um, when we start thinking about strategy and also in time from now, um it may not be us sitting at the table, and that direction might very well change. Um, I personally feel that uh I mean, I think it'd be great to have a sign standard in the future, but if we are using their funds, um I think that they should have some authority on what their sign looks like. Thank you.
Counselor Cromwell.
It's been made very apparent, not only on this room, but on Facebook and multiple conversations with dozens of people. We are here to represent the county and those rape payers within the county, and those rape payers within the county have spoken. It is very easy to say, well, now we're gonna look making a sign standard because a group from Wandering River decided that they had the ability to raise the funds and put up a sign, a sign that they were told the county will have no help in and no involvement in. It is very easy to go after the fact and go, we're gonna take your, your design, your funds, and we're going to alter them for our benefit. I think that is a disservice to the community and the people that have worked on that project. Arguing over a sign, I'd like to remind everybody that Wandering River was once I D eighteen and we were gifted to Athabasca County back in the nineties. Um it is impossible to say that municipal affairs might not redesign county lines in twenty years because of whatever massive changes are out there. This sign should have no impact in that. This community group built a beautiful sign, supported by the communities of Wandering River, Lacklavish, Plamon, and Port McMurray. And all throughout, if you look at the appendix four, I believe it was, you have a phenomenal list of where all these funds came from. And I I stand by, we owe it to the people, we owe it to the group, to put up a sign that is reflective of current times, that is reflective of the community and reflection of the hard work that has been done, and I stand behind allowing them to put up that sign that they have designed and that they are paying for. Let's remember that for one minute here. It is very easy for people in this room to talk about what you're gonna do with funds that belong to the county. These funds do not belong to the county. Not one penny of it belongs to the county. And how can we tell you that you're gonna spend your money on this and that for me? I would tell you to go pound sand. And I think we owe it to be fair about that, as we are not using our own purse for this project. And it is high time that that gets updated, it gets installed. We've held them in limbo for a very long time now. Because of, again, not with ill ill intent, but because of what administration had told them and which path they were told to proceed on. So I think it's very cut and dry.
Thank you. Counselor Gork.
I think we made a number of decisions without having the full story. And I think it was explained to us pretty thoroughly today so that we know exactly where we stand. And if there was a time where you could ask the community to make concessions, that time has passed, because I don't think anybody, I don't think the goodwill is left there anymore. I would like to see them given the opportunity to apply for a permit, and in the permit, the permit should state who will maintain, look after, or lease, or whatever, all that should be worked out at that time. And I think the county should take responsibility to keep their property in good standing or uh contribute to the community to have them do it themselves for a contribution from the county. But I would like to just have this situation resolved and uh and uh I really don't know that it matters that much to have every sign and every hamlet looks exactly the same. Um, it, it doesn't seem that relevant. I think people should get what they want and what they're willing to pay for.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alrighty, um I am in total
I would propose an amendment to have the sign in. I don't remember the exact wording of the motion, but an amendment that would reflect the color, reflect the county blue. Apologies for cutting you off, I thought you were about to call a question.
That's all right. To reflect the county blue, okay. Um, before we go forward with the uh amendment vote, um, I did want to to comment. Um, I think I agree with a lot with is what's what's being said here today. What we're missing uh that we didn't really say is we heard loud and clear today from the residents of of Wandering River, and they made it very clear what it is they're looking for. And I so appreciate the presentation that we had today, because it gave us that insight on this money that these people worked so hard to raise over two years, was done so on the premise of this design. This is the location, this is what it looks like, and the wholeheartedly buy-in by everybody for it should not be ignored. That is something, I don't know how we got so lost in this, but um we do not have a current sign standard, we do not have current branding, we do not have those things. I was in Rochester over the weekend, they have the cutest little sign on on their entrance, I just love it, and it does not have county logo on it, it does not have county colors on it. Grassland has an amazing sign. These are the things that the community came together to create, and that's the things that we need to honor. We work for the people. And those people have spoken loud and clear, loud and clear. So in my opinion, the um motion that you had put forward, which we will read again before we go forward, is the motion that I am definitely in favor of. So without, would you like to weigh in?
Um, yeah. This, I I I don't even, I don't even understand how this got so convoluted, I went back into the uh oh, into the January fourteenth meeting and and looked at all the motions. Before this sign, we had five motions. And 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 that was the beginning of the demise to 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 this sign and 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 honestly not understanding what the community was 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 trying to do. Uh, again, with my background, we've been talking about science for Wandering River for many, many years. And council's been beating this around and all this stuff, eh, so you know what, uh I, I let's just let them do their sign and 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 get out of this mess, because next one's gonna be coming down, will be probably Collington that wanna do a sign and 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 stuff like that, and 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 we've just got it's it's just compounding. It's like, good lord, if they, you know what, I'm I'm I I really like county blue, I bleed blue, and uh and and that, but you know what? I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna die on this mountain, I'm not, so.
No, thank you. And and I guess it also should be noted that each of our hamlets has their own identity. And each of our hamlets are very proud of their own identity, and um we need to honor that as well. I mean, it it would lead me to uh want to reconsider our wayfinding uh sign strategy uh motion as well um during this period, because um I don't think that's funds that would be wisely spent. I think this, as Counselor Chamsik mentioned, we may not be the people sitting at this table, and so that money could be spent and then reversed with another council's uh opinion, so um with that being said, does anybody else have anything that they would like to add?
As the mover, can I have a final word?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Just like to, and I know we've beaten it to death here, but remind my friends here at the table of page thirty-four of your agenda. Where it highlights from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-four, the community involvement. With a tipping point at just over seven thousand dollars in the twenty twenty-one year to over thirty-two thousand dollars for that design sign is a huge testament to the support behind that. And I thank you for the consideration. And I thank you for the consideration.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we had an amendment put forward for this, which was to have the sign reflect the county blue. So if there is no further discussion on that, on that amendment to have the sign reflect the county blue, all those in favor?
Aye.
Two and opposed? Two, three, four, fives. We'll just say that that has six to two and that motion or that amendment has failed. On the um original motion, Counselor Cromwell, if or would you mind reading that again, please?
Motion to the direct administration to proceed with the permit application to the wandering river community group for the installation of the welcome sign as designed by the group, and I'm gonna hand that to Ms. Blair.
Thank you very much. She's got it. Perfect. Is there any further discussion? All right, those in favor? Two, three, four, five, six. Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. So seven and one. Thank you. That motion has passed.
And we rescind that.
Would you like to go ahead? Um, and okay, Counselor Chamsick would like to have um the motion two, five dash six for the wayfinding sign strategy reconsidered. Do I have that? Hmm, did I bring that one with me? Bear with me, I'll see if I can find that one.
I'm sorry, I don't have the actual motion with me to read out the one that's to be reconsidered.
Administration question, please. If that is, uh, would that automatically be taken off of the action item list? Or does it need to be mo- motioned, rescinded by council?
If it's a motion for us to act on something, then we probably need to deal with it at some point. Maybe maybe not today. But we can, maybe when we need need to update the action list in the future.
Okay, so do we wanna go forward with reconsidering motion two, five, six for the wayfinding sign strategy today?
Might as well try.
Yeah, yes. To reconsider it, we need two thirds vote. Yeah, to reconsider that motion two, five dash six. So if we should oh, go ahead, please, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. For the chair to administration, have any actions been taken to secure the consultant for the wayfinding strategy?
Madam Chair, no.
Okay, so that's one of the things that we can go forward with. So let's go ahead then. Um, Counselor Chamsick would like to reconsider uh motion two, five dash six. All those in favor? To reconsider the two, five dash six, one, two, three, four, five, six? And all those opposed?
Nay.
So that is in reconsideration. So I'm assuming the reconsideration now for that motion is to have it rescinded. All right. All right, so if we can go forward with rescinding the motion two, five dash six for the wayfinding sign strategy, all those in favor?
Is there a mover just to clarify?
Counselor Chamsick, sorry. Yep, I apologize. Is there any discussion? Thank you.
We've talked a lot about uh hamlet strategy and sub levels of service. I think this is a bad move um to for us to go away from this. We're gonna have to look at it eventually and like to take it off the books now. I don't think is the right move.
Thank you, Counselor Chamsick.
I just, I I do agree. Eventually, this is a conversation we're gonna need to have, but at the cost of the talks fair and the consultant. When I feel that this could be handled in-house um at a later date, I think we could move in that direction.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion here? Um, and I agree, it's uh an expensive uh venture that I believe also that um can be handled in-house. And we're also at a situation right now where we have signs that are nowhere near the end of their life, that um we're not um in that position, I don't believe to be replacing signs at this time. Um, I guess I I do agree that at some point, but this might not be the time. All right, is there any other discussion? All right, all those in favor to rescind the wayfi- wayfinding sign strategy uh resolution two, five dash six uh Counselor Chamsick's motion, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, six, I guess. And all those opposed?
Aye.
Six and two. Thank you. Alrighty, we are now at the section of community event calendars, eight, one, eight point one B, page one hundred of your agenda package.
Oh, yeah, I just have something really quick to add, Ms. Blair. Um, on March fourth would be Shrove Tuesday at Prosperita. Shrove Tuesday at, yes, um, on the eighth is the Atmore crib tournament. And the eleventh is the annual, or sorry, the general Atmore general meeting um for their community group.
Where was that? The seventh?
Sorry, that is the eleventh.
Righty.
And that's all.
Does it?
Thank you.
Counselor Gurlak.
On the fifteenth of February, the Rochester Community Hall is having a sweetheart supper and dessert auction for all those who are itching to bid on something.
Bye.
Bye.
Yes. Just don't bid on Counselor Gurlak's pie. He's got that one wrapped up.
Coconut cream is mine.
Is that all?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anybody else for the event calendar? Alrighty, is there a motion to accept the event calendar as Counselor Chamsick to accept or receive the? What are we saying here? We, I'm getting tired. Uh, we're going to go ahead and accept the um amendments to the what is it? The event calendar as discussed. All those in favor? One, two, three, five, seven, eight. All those opposed? Eight and O, that carries. Thank you. Um, we're going to move to our calendars, our eight point two. I've lost it. Who wants to begin?
I can go.
Thank you.
Uh, yesterday I had a a meeting uh for Northern Lights uh with our, sorry, Northern Lights Library System with our consult um consultant. On the twentieth, I have a um E O P, E P course, and that's about it.
Okay, E O E P is E P.
E O E P, yes.
Okay. Anybody else? Counselor Minz?
Uh, but uh notification, I got a meeting tomorrow, uh Alice meeting in Westlock. Well, I forgot about that last one, so.
Alice, February twelfth, okay?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Hey, I also would like to add in March, there's two tentative um Athabasca Landing Trail Steering Committee meetings. One is the March fourteenth and one is March twenty-eighth. Um, and hopefully the twenty-eighth or one of those dates, there'll be a a road tour uh doing of the Athabasca Landing Trail, which will be awesome. And if that's it, who would like to?
Um.
Sorry, thank you.
I have one for March twenty-sixth. There is a meeting between the Athabasca County and Village of Boyle Intermunicipal Committee.
Oil Intermunicipal, okay. Is there a time? I'm sorry. Nine thirty?
March tenth, March tenth, there's F C S S and Blue Heron.
F C S S and Blue Heron, March ten.
Surprised you missed that, Counselor Chamsick.
Thanks, Joe, for having my back.
It's nine thirty as well for F C S S?
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock and Blue Heron?
Two thirty.
Two thirty. Hey, anybody, Counselor Hall?
Um, should we be proposing an inter municipal committee meeting with the town of Athabasca for early March first week? Or is there maybe already one proposed?
Um, is there a date that you have proposed?
Fourth.
The fourth? I think that might, that might be conflicting with um the R T O C.
The part?
There it it might be conflicting with another event that day. We haven't
Calendar's empty.
It is empty, um, but there's uh conversation taking place on an event that day. The March fourth. So there'd be some counselors that may be taking an event R T O C that I have just thought about. So is there another date that you might have?
Well, I mean, I guess if there's events that we don't all know about, I'd be happy to hear other suggestions. I just, the first week's good because there's nothing else planned.
Right. It's with the R C M P training. Mm-hmm.
Let's see that.
Sorry. Yes, in Edmonton, yes. Is the sixth something that's?
So do you wanna put that in the calendars?
Not as of yet, because there's several dates and that's one of them that seem to be uh favorable.
But are we gonna coordinate that with all the people who are interested in going? Or is it just gonna be kind of, here's the one, how's it work?
The email went out to several people um who responded on that. So the sixth, is that a a date for the inter municipal that would work for everyone?
I guess the only thing uh is that we know what we're gonna talk about? Like if we have a meeting with the town?
Like the C A O has a list.
So Madam Chair, just, I'm confused. This is the inter municipal committee, so it's not all of council?
No. It would be uh Reeve, Deputy Reeve and Counselor Hall.
So, um, if you wanna pitch that date, I can send it to the town. I know their C A O is away. Um, they'd get back to me next week. And then there's, there's still time. We have uh a meeting in between time. But also could uh have a discussion about what the top items are.
So tentatively, we'll mark that down for tentative and then discussion will take place at the next meeting to confirm. Does that sound fair? Counsel Waller.
Sorry, I must have missed this last meeting, but what's the council lunch workshop?
Um, that's something that uh we were going to have as part of our um discussion amongst council for some strategy planning and that kind of thing. I don't know if that's still going to be, uh, because if we have the, and actually, thank you for bringing that up, if there's going to be people away for the um water shed meeting, it's gonna be pretty difficult if we don't have everybody here. So maybe that's something we should reschedule.
I don't be here, so.
You won't be here either. Okay, so that's something then, the uh twenty-fifth, February twenty-fifth, the lunch council workshop um that we need to reschedule. Does anybody have a date that would work for them on that? Do you wanna do that?
Yeah.
Okay. That sounds fair. Absolutely. Okay, let's do that. All right, so we'll just cancel it for now and we will reschedule it at another time. All right, so the twenty-fifth ended that in that situation, we only have the Army uh member meeting at ten A M. Um, and there'll be a few people that will be away, but will that one be live streamed then and recorded? Do we know?
Madam Chair, which?
The um, the ten A M Army member meeting?
That is typically not, um, it's not considered a council meeting.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right. Anybody else?
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, we should probably talk about the March committee of the whole date.
Yes.
Could we move it to the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth would be great. M P C.
Just hang on, Gary. I guess that would be if administration would be wanting to do two close back-to-back agendas like that. One twenty-fifth, one to twenty seventh.
Yes.
Last time they said they appreciated it.
Yeah, Madam Chair gives us a an extra week to work on the agenda, so it's that makes for a busy week, but that's okay.
Busy, busy amount of reading. One person told me when I was actually becoming a counselor or running for council, they says, you're gonna actually learn how to read. Whi- whichever, don't matter to me. We can, we can go the twenty-fifth if that's an agreement with everybody, sure.
Okay. Is that the consensus? Everybody's good with that?
We only have M P C.
Only on M P C, yep.
Twenty-fifth sounds good to me.
Okay, and I'm sure that's Counselor Cromwell, that works for you? Well, the M P C and uh committee of the whole same day, the twenty, March twenty-fifth, yes, okay. That's, looks like it's a goal.
And Madam Chair, so we would be advertising immediately following M P C.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could we pick a time like ten forty-five or or sorry, nine forty-five or ten or something?
Immediately after M P C?
I'd say nine forty-five then.
Okay. Is it easier to do immediately after? And then that way, if we do happen to go, you know, outside of the norm?
Uh, that's all up to you guys. It's just if we advertise it at a certain time. Um, so if the M P C meeting only takes ten minutes, um, if we advertise immediately following, we can go ahead.
Right. I agree.
Um, but that's completely up to you guys.
Yeah, I I agree with immediately following instead of a set time. Is that fair? All right, immediately following it is?
And and I guess the reason I said is there not all members of council are on M P C. So it allows them to know when they should be here versus just coming and sitting.
And I understand, uh, judging normally from our M P C, I don't know how heavy it is for this time, but um all right. Counselor Cromwell.
February twenty-sixth to twenty-eight, uh, care conference through the Waste Commission in Canmore. Camrose, one of the cams.
I'd be going if it was Cammore, mm-hmm. All right. Are we guys, we're done? Anybody who wants to own the motion, Counselor Cromwell would like to approve the uh county council meeting calendars as discussed. As amended, as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? One, so it's eight and one. We're going to move on to reports. Uh, ten point one, starting on page one oh five of your agenda. Um, before we go on to the different items here, I just wanna say thank you again to council, um, the counselors that have provided reports in this uh section of our agenda. It is so uh welcome to see and such great information for for our public. So thank you for doing that. Um, I know I was really happy to see these updates. So uh again, I appreciate that. Um, and I believe uh Counselor Minz, you wanted to discuss the Aspen Regional Water Services Commission?
Um, we had a meeting February fourth in the office here, and Counselor Hall can jump in anytime he he wants to. Just a quick update, uh, obtained extension on the uh asset and governance study uh grant from Alberta Government to to uh continue on. We we had a little bit of amount of money that left to spend on it, so they give us an extension on it, which was good. Um, and uh out of that, we'll probably hopefully get a uh new, new utility master plan and 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 just have some more uh just come up with a plan, maybe a strategic plan, hopefully uh through the, through the engineering company and that and uh I don't know what else, uh, financials. Okay, so so uh uh the water commission is flipping over to uh doing their, their own payroll in-house. So that's just uh what's going on there. Uh, should shouldn't be too bad for them just due to the fact that there's what, four employees or something like that? Uh, financials, uh got some stuff here that I can't even read. Gonna look at uh doing a study, right, on on the uh sewer, on the sewer charges there are astronomical, actually, if you think about it, coming out of the water treatment plant. So looking at doing a study of maybe we have our own retention pond and uh with with that Eco Mister idea. This comes through council, uh, member hall. A very good idea. Come up with it and do a study on it and see if maybe there's actually uh advantageous for us to have our own pond.
Right, so the background, I think, because you and I are in the meetings, but for everybody else. But so the background, I think, because you and I are in the meetings, but for everybody else, the Water Commission does not buy raw water, or just sorry, does not buy uh finished water from the town. They have an internal pump that they had installed, because historically, if you wanted to flush a toilet at the water plant, you are, they actually had to buy water off the town to run their, their potable um domestic water system, which at some point, somebody realized was absolutely bonkers, since they were sitting on top of the reservoir of water, and it was cheaper to take it from the tank under the floor than it was to buy it from the town. Um, and I'm not sure how many decades that took to come to that conclusion, but far too long. The problem then comes in town is water, uh sewer charges were based on water that was used uh as a percentage, and uh the, the plant in cleaning filters and membranes produces, you know, a, a reasonable quantity of wastewater, and so that is now, I think, metered, and it's uh released to the, to the town lagoon. And um, but the cost on that is, would, I think, approach nearly a hundred thousand dollars a year, possibly a little better. The number we saw at the meeting, uh, if you just factored it up, would be in the nineties, and the um I don't know what her title is, but the latest comment was that was a low bill, so hundred grand a year to dump what's essentially water that's got some coagulant in it, and um has been used to clean filters, so mostly clean down to the plant. The question then came up, is there a way we can uh be more efficient in how we dispose of that water, and given that it's not filled with toxics or uh black, uh, you know, the nasty stuff, maybe there's a way to evaporate some of it, or just send a more concentrated slurry into the line. And uh, and which, as everybody by now has, I'm sure, figured out, most of the plant costs are fixed. Um, water prices out of the plant are based whatever the volume is, it's based on, you know, against that fixed cost, so the two ways to get water costs down are to reduce your fixed costs or to increase your volume. It's, it's a simple formula, and this is part of the the investigation to see if we can reduce fixed costs. And the other thing I think you were about to say on the financials is the year-end numbers came in, they were right bang on budget, where everybody expected them to be, and um I'm not sure, I'm, I'm suspecting a certain fire downtown um helped with the water purchases at one point, but, but all in all, it um it did, they, they performed very, very close to budget.
Yeah, you betcha, and then in the financials also was uh lots of money spent on I T, and that's just a, that's just a new norm, it's, it's
You're saying I T, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I T, and I think you said T O or something like that, but uh a lot of it's just programs and stuff, running, operating the water plant, plus the SCADA systems out in out in, in the hamlets and, and, and all that, so. And then uh we're, we're obtaining a compensation review for the uh for compensation for the C A O and, and uh uh, C A O and manager and staff.
And staff.
And staff, yeah. So, so, yeah.
Fantastic.
And I think, um, you said maybe a strategic plan, that, that was in my memory, one of the outcomes was it would to define the strategic direction so that, you know, whoever sits at that table, it's been a number of years since they've done that. And as part of the, how do we sell more water, how do we reduce costs, is, what's the, what's the strategic direction of the the commission in terms of uh what, what kind of goals should they be looking at, and um so that, that's part of that study and that work that's happening.
Yeah. The master plan, the la- the last master plan that we had actually, or, or that the commission had was from two thousand and six. So it's a, it's time to revitalize that master plan. Ironically, things have changed, so.
Thank you, appreciate that. I hear you were going through the master plan of the Athabasca Landing Trail as well. Um, so the next item, I think, um, Counsel Minz, you mentioned was the ten point one A A, the Regional Emergency Advisory Committee.
Yeah, I'm the alternate on there, uh, so I went to the meeting uh on the twenty-seventh, it was a quick meeting, and it wasn't long, it was like beginning of January, so everybody's still coming off of, off of a holiday and stuff like that, but um one thing that was discussed there was uh a motion was made to send a letter to A H S regard, regarding issues with the uh healthcare uh people coming into uh urban versus rural. Because they, they bring these people in, like uh, like the nurses, international nurses and that. And it, what really affects it is the families, so the wives, uh wives and children come with, with uh with these people and they end up n- nobody can drive, uh, they end up needing, needing items, so, so it's just more of a uh, put more I'm trying to find a word, but just put more liability onto, onto the, the people in the community to help transfer these people around and that, and, and when they, when these families come into uh urban areas, it's, it's not as bad, like, like big cities and stuff like that. But in rural, rural towns and, and places like that, it's becoming a real problem, and the committee felt that, that there wasn't enough information going back to A H S regarding this, so they were gonna send it there.
Thank you, I, I uh made a mistake in announcing which report you were talking about, so that's my fault. Um, that was the actually Regional Healthcare Recruitment and Retention Committee.
Yeah.
I apologize, that was my fault, I um, I mixed up the uh, the line before that one, so many apologies. That was for the Regional Healthcare Retention, uh Recruitment and Retention Committee, and thank you very much for that. Awesome. Anybody? All right, once again, thank you, everyone, for your reports um and, and bringing them in. Um, I can't stress enough the importance of, of these committee reports, because we do a lot of work outside of, of council meetings, and uh there's a lot of great committees that, that the public need to be aware that are also serving the community, so thank you very much for that.
There was a, just a couple of items.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I interrupt? I apologize.
Uh, just a couple of them, Skills Day event uh at the, uh, the for, for uh at the schools, and, and the uh appreciation barbecue will be discussed at the next meeting uh for dates.
Okay.
And that, so that's just a heads up to Counsel Cromwell uh for the next meeting, and uh um just a quick conversation happened there, there, there could be a good, good uh story, is there could be two local nurse practitioners by the end of the year of twenty twenty-seven here.
Nice.
So, that's, and that's local, local nurses that went to nurse practitioners, so.
That's fantastic, that's a great, great news story.
Yeah, you betcha, so.
All right.
Yeah, that's it.
Awesome, so thanks again, everyone, for those reports. Uh, we really appreciate that, um, and if we would like to move into closed session for section twelve, uh, Counsel Cromwell, all those in favor to go into closed? And Mr. Gerlock was at it, oh yeah? Yes, sorry, and any opposed? We're going into closed, six and one, thank you. All right. We'll wait for all right. We're ready to go? I'm just waiting for Counsel Anderson's pretty face there.
I'm here.
There you are, okay, perfect. We have come out of closed, and we have a few motions to make. Um, twelve point one is uh the first item, and Counsel Hall would like to direct administration to complete agreements with landowners as amended and agreed to by administration. I was just gonna do a second motion, but we can do and, further to direct administration to discuss with Alberta Environment, the reclamation of the County Pit to permit an extended reclamation timeline. All right. So with those, with that motion on the table, if there's no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And no opposed? Seven and oh, thank you. Twelve point two. Um Counsel Chamsik would like to recommend, or would like to direct, pardon me, I'm gonna start this again. Counsel Chamsik would like to direct administration to proceed with option one, paragraph one, as discussed in closed session. So that's good, okay, if there's no discussion, all those in favor? And opposed?
Nay.
Okay, six and one. Motion carries. And our last item of the day, twelve point three. Counsel Anderson would like to move that council receives the report regarding Rule three, seven, one, three, five, one, zero, zero, zero as information, and move that council denies the request to vary the tax payment agreement for Rule three, seven, one, three, five, one, zero, zero, zero. Okay, there's no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Okay, six and one, motion passes. And with that, and with that, I think our meeting is now adjourned at time two thirty-three, thanks, everybody, for uh all your hard work and